Good evening, everyone. We welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Ivan City Council held this Thursday evening, February 3rd, 2022. We'll note for those who are tuned in, we have a full house here this evening. Can't imagine why, but we'll find out. I'll begin by recognizing that we do have a quorum. In fact, we have all of our current seated council members here. Welcome back Lance Anderson, who had a bout with something bad and glad to see you. We're going to have a flag salute to begin our meeting this evening, presented by Troop 407, the Ivan City Scout Troop, right? And those handsome... Ivan Santa Clara. That handsome group of boys in scout uniforms back there are going to present the colors to us, led by Gage Schmutz, right? Gage, raise your hand. Okay, we're going to turn it to you. We'd ask all of you to stand. If you can.
Color guard forward march. Salute. Color guard, post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, dismiss. The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Gage. You can come back anytime you want. We're so pleased to have you come and do that. So I know the assistant scout master, but tell me your names. Current scout master?
Kent Walker.
Kent? Kent Walker from Santa Clara. Thank you for doing this, for these boys. Awesome. I agree. Are they working hard? Are they advancing? Okay. Keep at it, there young men. We'll now have an invocation be led in that by council member. Mayor?
Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful to be together this evening for this council meeting. We're grateful for those that have joined us here in our community. We're grateful for the beautiful area that we live in, for the wonderful people that live here, for the legacy of faith that has made this place a wonderful place to live and enjoy for all. We're grateful for those who serve and work so diligently to provide the necessary services and the things that we need here. For those who work to protect us and to bring water to our homes and to provide provide the comforts of life. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to serve. We're grateful for our country and for all the blessings that we enjoy. We're mindful of the things that are on our agenda tonight, specific to appointing a new council member. We ask thy blessing to be upon us in our discussion and that we may, there may be understanding and unity. And we pray for these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I'll now poll the council to determine if we have any conflicts of interest based on this evening's agenda, beginning with council member Anderson.
None.
Thank you. Council member Johnson?
No conflicts.
Council member Mayor?
No conflicts.
Council member Scott?
No conflicts.
Thank you, and I have no conflicts. Beginning with our department reports, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, beginning with Parks and Recreation. We receive a written report that you would have access to if any of you were interested. You can make contact with city offices and receive that. Should. Is that good?
No.
Now bend down.
Have to bend down? Like that?
We're working on that, folks.
It's got to get a little shorter. Well, things are going well. We're starting into the spring stuff. Basketball is about halfway over. Actually officially tonight, basketball will be halfway through. We've got things coming up, the Red Mountain 55K. So any of you feeling like running 34 miles in the dirt? Come on out. It's great fun. So, yeah, I didn't hear anybody. But everything's going well. The only thing that you may have seen down at the bottom there, we've been hit with a little graffiti, a lot of graffiti in the last couple of weeks. And we've been trying to track down who it is. We've given the police all the information we can. It seems to have slowed a little bit in the last week or so. So hopefully that means they've either scared them or caught them. And as usual, our police department will probably rouse them out and will know who they were before too long. So, but other than that, things are going well. If you have any questions, I know you got a big, fun, long evening tonight, so I won't take up too much of your time, so. Counsel? You're clear. Thank you. Yes. Folks, we do have some seats up front. Please don't be embarrassed to come up and take one of them. Obviously, we build a bigger council chambers. We didn't buy any more chairs, however, yet. I think that's next on the purchase order. So, do I see Bob here?
No, he's out of town.
Okay. Do we have anyone here to report? Okay. We have a written, oh, there we are. I was looking for your face. You were buried back there. Welcome. This is our terrific interim fire chief.
Thank you. So we had a busy month last month. We had a total of 137 calls, which is up 16 calls from the prior month. So every month, we continue to get busier and busier.
That's combined fire and ERS, right?
Yes, combined fire and EMS, correct. We had 100 medical calls and 13 fire calls. So very busy. We hired a new part-time paramedic that we're very excited to join and a new part-time AEMT firefighter to join us. So that will be a great addition. Lots of training last month. We had training on fire, excuse me, chimney fires, advanced cardiac life support and building construction. We also attended winter fire school, which is a popular event in our area every January. And that's it. We're doing great. We're very busy and we're keeping up. So, anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
And maybe for the next time, but is there, did I hear right that there's some discussion about whether or not we would continue with a voluntary force and move away from that to a paid? Am I hearing that from the community? Is that right, or I just wanted to validate that?
We have just barely entertained the idea. So not much discussion on that, but it is an item that has, we have thought about, yes.
Because it's harder to get volunteer firefighters?
It is very hard to get volunteer, correct, yes. And then that would provide us with a more cohesive staff. So part-time employees that would be with us more often, train with us more often, work with us more often, and be compensated better.
My only question is, can you get to Canada in five minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I have a citizen comment form.
We have a planning commission report.
Oh, forgot that. We're in a hurry. Come on up, David.
Mayor, counsel. So planning commission this week, we went through first a zoning ordinance for ground mounted solar allowances. And we did pass that on for your vote tonight with just some minor grammatical changes that Milcey just clarified a little better. Didn't change any of it, just, other than just clarified it just a little bit. So we sent that on through for you guys. That was after a public hearing. We had another public hearing on the LRV for accents and trims and what we was doing with that. And then we went into discussion, rather heated discussion, rather lengthy discussions, shall we say. The final conclusion was is we've postponed working with that until we get a little more information on some of the current houses that are being built and what fits better for them. So we've postponed that one. And then we took considerable amount of time and actually started working on the plat, on the maps for what we're trying to do for the overlays and the zoning and all that that we're working on right now. So that was great. We had some good discussion on that, I think. We got some direction. We're going to go, we're going to go one more week. Putting a little bit more of it together before we go to like general, you know, we'll return over to the public, kind of see, let them get a view of it and that. And then also what Mike has done in the back for all that's here today, there is a box back there that has small comment cards in it. So if there's anybody here that would like to comment on what they would like to see within that zoning and general plan, Mike would like to leave, have you just put a simple note on there and leave that so that we kind of have that input as well. Okay, and yeah, that pretty much covers what we did. Any questions?
Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, I thought I had a citizen comment form. Yeah, I know what it's about. Just don't remember who it is. Thank you. Sandra Roberts, are you here? There you are. You look like a pickleballer.
Well, that's a nice compliment. I would take that.
It was intended as a compliment.
Thank you.
And so your citizen request form indicated that you would like to approach the council. Now, these are for future agenda items, so your hope is that the council will act in some way to increase?
Me too and my group to present what our thoughts are.
Okay, off you go.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate that. And as an avid pickleball player, I am acutely aware of the needs of additional courts in our community. We have two designated pickleball courts in Ivans, Desert Rose and Shared Courts at Unity Park, which don't meet regulations. Okay, during peak hours, these courts are always in use. And it has been my personal experience, and I usually play four to five days a week.
Can you hear?
Great. Anyway, during peak hours, it's my experience that pickleball players need to wait long periods of time or relocate to another community to play pickleball. And those courts are also being utilized during peak hours. During the summer, we all know that temperatures soar and there's only a few hours that pickleball can be played. Okay, currently, the number of pickleball players significantly exceeds the number of pickleball courts that are available. I believe additional pickleball courts could be constructed at Unity Park adjacent to the tennis courts with minimal impact with the current recreational activities there. We have a photo if you want to share. I understand I have two and a half minutes. I don't want to exceed that. But I will be sharing a petition with several hundred residents that have signed this petition for additional pickleball courts in Ivans, Utah. Thank you for the time. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel? So all of you pickleball players might be interested to know that we have been in the planning stages of a new regional park that is still a ways off, I hate to say, but in that, in that park area, there is a pickleball complex intended to be built. I think it's eight courts. Benny left, right?
It is eight.
Anyway, we've got some hoops to jump through. It's on BLM land. It's just south of Highway 91. And that may be our earliest opportunity to do what you're suggesting, but go ahead and get all the signatures. It's always fun to see who wants us to do what.
I am excited that you want to do that, but I am trying to meet current needs. And I understand, you know, that I don't, I mean, I believe the property has not been constructed. Is that my two minutes? I don't want to exceed my two minutes. And so, you know, that doesn't meet our current needs with all the residents that we have had in the past years. And Desert Rose was the last pickleball court.
So this is really in Benny's court. Dale, I don't know, this is a, this is a council action here, right? This is a budget item and determining where we'd have location to do that. We're a little bit limited on park property, as you know.
Right. And, you know, again, we do have a thing where Richard has done a great job at showing where we could do that with little, minimal impact.
Great. These are pictures you're going to send us?
Oh, you have them. I sent them. Dear Richard, my dear friend.
It was included, and here's a blow up of where you could put four courts on the on the side of Unity Park. Here, that would take up about that footprint, and it would only displace one of the youth soccer fields that was mine, which could easily be put over here instead of
Thank you. I'm a custom home builder and I'm putting in three pickleball courts right now on private residences. It's a new thing. Okay, thank you. We have no public hearing and action items this evening, so we're going to move to item 5A, where the council will now interview candidates to fill the midterm vacancy on the city council and discuss and consider Resolution Number 2022-03R, a resolution of Ivan City, Utah, appointing a city council member to fill the midterm vacancy. That was left by Sue Gordhammer resigning. So a couple of housekeeping things here. We've received, I mean literally hundreds of emails. Thank you for your interest in this. It's obvious that you care a lot about who this person might be. They were spread out among several of the candidates, different reasons posed for why each one ought to be our selection this evening. There are only four requirements, and of course, all of the applicants have fulfilled all of those requirements. Lot of comments about needs to be another female to replace Sue. You're welcome to think that in the voting booth and write to us and say we ought to think about that, but that that would be a discriminatory thing. We cannot, that cannot be a part of our discussion this evening. So we're going to proceed with the first part of this. Well, Dale, do you want to outline the statutory process that we're going to have to go through this evening?
Yes, it's a very simple process if the vacancy is less than 30 days old, which this is. You interview the candidates who have submitted timely applications, and you have those attached to the agenda. You interview them in an open meeting. And then you have a discussion and the governing body then moves to appoint one of those persons to the city council. And if there's a second, then the vote is taken and a majority vote, which has to be three votes. That's the minimum to take action is three votes. So that's the process.
Thank you. So as we begin these interviews, hopefully you're all comfortable answering a couple of questions in the public body because it is to occur in a public meeting. We're not going to go into a conference room and quietly have our discussion, so everyone is privy to to the questions that are asked and the answers that are given. And so I'm going to invite each one up in the order they appear on the agenda. There are seven, beginning with Shane McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. How are you today?
Great. So by the way, for those who are not applicants, each applicant gave us a stated reason or reason for their applying for this office and a resume. I got to tell you, just incredible people in this city. I literally could be thrilled to work with any one of the candidates here this evening. Tremendous backgrounds, tremendous experience, capability. And so it's going to be a difficult thing. So I'm going to open, I'm going to allow you, Shane, to give a brief statement just for the public to hear as to why you're current, you're an old, you're an old council member, well, not very old. Month and a half. Anyway, and so why is it that you're interested in filing again? And then I'm going to open it for questions. Yes? Yeah. Somebody in the back, raise your hand if you can't hear, right? It's tricky. We don't have a long enough mic stem here and we're trying to get that fixed.
Okay.
Off you go.
Ready? So like mentioned, my name's Shane McDonald. My desire is to just continue serving the residents of Ivans. I had presented my application, but many of you know my accomplishments already. I served Ivan City Council for 12 years. Recently ran in the latest election and narrowly missed a seat by 47 votes. So congratulations to both Mike and Lance on that. And which is an extremely tough thing, as you guys know. Campaigning, running, putting yourself out there is an extremely tough thing. As a city councilman, I take a pride in a lot of things. This city hall is one thing I take pride in. I was involved the whole way through in bringing this to conception and to where we are now with it, as well as the Veterans Home, the school, the medical school. I think are great things here, assets here in our city. As a council member, I served as a board member for the Washington County Solid Waste District representing Ivans. I recently approached Ivan City to continue, and I know that that process is on its way. To be able to continue representing Ivans where I recently, for the last two years, have served as the chairman of that. Unfortunately, directing it through some of its toughest times since its inception, the Solid Waste District, with going through two solid waste managers, having to just about manage it myself with the crew that was out there for some time. And, but we made it through. No hiccups in anybody's service of getting their trash taken out, which is good because when trash builds up, it gets smelly. Another one of the projects I was involved in and headed up was the skate park, something I'm very proud of. A place for our youth to go and have a good time. One of the things I'm proud of about it is that it's up front, not tucked away. It's very visible for all to see. Often, I know in many cities, they tend to tuck those away because they want them hidden. My push was to make sure that it was visible and not hidden, just so that it was readily available for all ages to entertain themselves at. If you've been passed there, I'm amazed at how many people go there and skate of all ages, in all times of the day, heat of the summer. There's, very rarely is there not somebody there. So any questions?
So this is the interview part, and I'll open it to the council members to ask any questions that they might have. Mayor? Please.
Shane, your application talks about a lot of the things you've done. You talked about some of them here, and you have more in your application. But also, I've sort of got a three-part question. So why have you applied for this job? You kind of answered that one, but why should you be appointed and what do you want to accomplish in the next two years?
Well, those are great questions. I think just represented by the fact that I recently ran is a good indication of why I want to fill this position. One of my main focuses was to continue as the chairman of the board representing Ivans on the Washington County Solid Waste District, which puts Ivans in a very, very unique position, being one of the smaller communities in the area, but having a large footprint, you might say, in waste management here in the county. Did that answer all your questions or did I miss one?
What is it you want to accomplish in the next couple of years?
That's what, mainly what I want to accomplish is to continue serving on that board. I want to, I know that they're getting ready to review the general plan. And I would like to be involved with that. I've worked very hard over the last 12 years to ensure, you know, over the last 12 years, we received a lot of emails talking about why people moved here, the night sky, the night sky. I was involved in that. I helped create those ordinances that established that standard. Not just the one we passed recently, but the one that was originally put into place. We worked very hard to make sure it was balanced and fair.
Thank you. I just have one question that I'm going to ask each applicant, and that is we are headed into extraordinary times when it comes to availability of water, how that impacts growth and so forth. Would you explain how, first of all, are you prepared to make some of the very difficult decisions that lie ahead for this council when it comes to water conservation? And the distribution of development rights that will be brought into conformity with the availability of water?
Absolutely. In fact, that's, you're beginning that discussion on your agenda tonight with the draft ordinance for those restrictions to put into place. I think it's critical that those restrictions get put into place, many of them. I don't have details on that ordinance at the time, but water is of the utmost importance. I think it should be at the top of every community's list on management of water use and how to ensure that that properties are not using too much and that existing residents don't run out of water because of new residents coming in. So I think it's definitely going to take a balance there. And a strict balance, unfortunately. We live in a desert.
Others?
We know him.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Christine Albrecht? Thank you, Christine.
Good evening. I'm one of the people that Mike is the right height for. I have absolutely none of the qualifications that Shane has. But I have developed a very great love for this city in the last almost five years that we've lived here. And as I read through the general plan and all those things, I was actually, oh, sorry. I was very impressed and amazed with what's going on in this, in this city. Up until very recently, I just have to admit that I wasn't particularly involved in any of these kinds of things. And I recently realized that if I need to help my country, the best place for me to help my country is at the grassroots level, and that's in my, in my community. So I've been trying to get more involved in those kinds of things recently. And I just, I have, I can't tell you any qualifications in that area because I don't have any. But I am very much, I'm open-minded about learning, and I would be very eager to learn the things that I need to learn to be an effective helper on the council. And I don't really know what else I can say about that.
No, that's good.
Questions?
So would you listen to, ask, answer a couple of questions?
Yeah, that's what I'd rather do now.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mayor?
Please.
I'm, I'm pretty much going to be doing the same thing with everybody, but Christine, thanks for applying and actually I really enjoyed reading your application because my wife and I also came from somewhere else and were instantly mesmerized by the beauty of Ivans. So you sort of brought that all back for me. Your application talks a little bit about why you want the job, but let me still ask you just briefly personally, just tell me why you should be appointed and what you want to accomplish in the next couple of years.
Well, to be really honest with you, what I would like to accomplish is for me to learn more about what goes on in a city to a great degree and then be able to apply that to helping with the city and with my neighbors and teach them. Because I think there's a lot of us out there who just take for granted the things that are going on and we don't really realize the behind the scenes of things. And so I'm just thinking if I could get educated of what, to what's going on and then help others learn those things as well, that would probably at this point, since I'm very much a neophyte on this stuff, that would be where I would start.
Thank you.
And so I'll pose the same question. Water is the big issue and ours and other cities are going to have to face some very, very difficult decisions. Some of them may appear punitive even, but water conservation is going to be the only long-term solution along with expanding our reuse capacity through the, through the district. And so it's not always popular to vote in favor of those kinds of, kinds of things, but it's very important for me to understand how you, how you would view those kinds of decisions.
Okay. I am totally and completely supportive of the water issues that, you know, that the conservation issues of the water. I grew up in upstate New York where it rains like crazy all the time, so it wasn't something I grew up having to deal with, but I was just talking to my son yesterday about this, about how, how can they keep doing things the way they're doing them and have enough water for us to continue to live here? So I'm completely supportive of, of whatever drastic measures need to be taken for us to be able to continue to live here and enjoy life here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Councilmember Johnson?
I have a question that I'm hoping to ask everyone else as well. I, I didn't ask Shane just simply because I have recently worked with him and, and know where he stands on this, but one thing that I feel is personally really important is to be committed to the job and to not just use it, you know, as it's convenient. In the past, I've seen a lot of members that have to do their vacations and stuff and spend a lot of time gone. And I just am hoping that the commitment is there and that you're willing to be committed. And as I recently learned, and I'm going to share a little tidbit about your person, personal situation right now, because I think it makes a big impact on us, and that is to show your commitment to this position, whether, regardless of your, your qualifications. I am very impressed with your commitment here tonight that you took your husband to the hospital with COVID today and turned right around and came back here because you had made a commitment to be here. And I think that says a lot for who you are and what you will do for our community. So thank you.
Thank you Jenny. Yeah, and my husband's totally supportive of it. He's, I, we discussed it and he said, go, go do it. So.
All the best to him.
Thank you very much. I didn't want to play that card, but thank you for playing it.
I just wanted to show your commitment and I, I will ask that of others too. I think that's a really important qualification is the commitment to the job.
I do do what I'm asked to do and if I say I'll do it, I do it.
Great. Any other questions?
I can ask one.
Thank you.
But I think I kind of know the answer. We're kind of seeking to discover kind of a motivating factor, which I think you've been really clear at what you're, why you're wanting. But is there anything you've observed in the, in the city and how it's being governed in the last while that maybe you don't quite agree with and you might do something a little different? What would that be? If anything.
I can't say. I'm probably just here with rose colored glasses on, but I just have been very impressed. I just, I just have enjoyed watching what goes on here. I, I had a good feel about the people and the area and I just don't have any complaints.
Got news for you. When we look outside, we all have rose colored glasses.
That is true.
That's what we see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. I know you're Adele, but it's Adele Marie Murphy. Thank you.
I just put Adele Marie because I'm, because of, that's my full name and it's on my resume.
It's a beautiful name.
It's two grandmothers, but my name, I go by Adele. And I have one thing to say to all of you, the singer, hello? Just so we know. I get asked that all the time. Got that out of the way. Okay. Why, why, why do I want to apply for this? I've lived in Ivans for 20 years. I can't believe I've been here 20 years. I'm kind of like a native sort of, but, but I came from Chicago, way different place. And I was, you all know, I was on the planning commission for 10 years. I served with three of you and Shane for part of it. So, you know, I've, you've seen a lot of my work. You've worked with me for a long time. I said on my application, my record kind of speaks for myself. I came in prepared to all the meetings. I read, I study the general plan and the, and the ordinances and the land use plan and look at all of that when I'm making my decisions, when I made a lot of my decisions and my recommendations on the planning commission. I also work for the Washington County Assessor's Office. I've been there 17 years and I am the, the manager basically of operations for the office. So I am the problem solver, the difficult conversation person, the person that explains things to customers. If there's a problem, I'm the one that gets called in to ruffle it, to take care of it all. And so I'm, I'm used to just getting in there and working and, and trying to solve problems. And I, I do a lot with the legislation that comes down the road at the assessor's office. We get a lot of things that, that they're changing every year and every year it's one more thing that we have to scramble and fix. So I guess I'm mostly a problem solver and I just approach things, you know, I'm an attorney, but I'm not an attorney in Utah, so don't hold that against me, anybody. I just have that lawyer background so I could read statutes and read and, and, and understand and draft legislation and things like that, just because I did it in a lot of my jobs. But I approach things also with a common sense and logic and I think that's really important to just think things through and approach it that way. So I love this city. I think I can make a difference and that's why I applied. I've been like on about a, what, a three-year hiatus, I think. I got off the planning commission in 2019 after 10 years and I'm ready to come back in. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've kind of got an order going here. Mike, do you want?
Mayor, well, first of all, hello. If you get this job, you can't be telling jokes. That's for Dennis, Dale and me only.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And Jenny.
I do have a really good sense of humor though, so I will have to, I might have to tell jokes sometimes, but go ahead.
Okay. So why'd you apply for this and what do you want to accomplish?
So I applied for it because I really enjoyed being on the planning commission. You know, I didn't want to stay on it forever. It wasn't, it was time. I had, I think, I had two five-year terms. I think now they do three-year terms. So it was time for me to go and it was good to have a little time off. I had some issues in my personal life that I had to deal with, but I'm, you know, I, I think that it's time for me to jump back in again. It's interesting, there's a lot of things coming up. You guys, you're revising the general plan. You're going to work at the, look at the land use. We've got the water issues, the growth, just what's, what's going on in the city and I just want to be a part of it. And I think I can make a difference. That's probably why. If I didn't think I could make a difference, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother. So, sorry, I'm not really looking at you because everybody's over here.
You're okay. I'm not worth a looking at.
Okay.
I understand. That's why they put me over here.
Is that it? Okay.
Dale did that on purpose.
Now he's telling jokes.
So you saw in this evening's agenda, we're, we're looking at a pretty comprehensive water conservation ordinance and I have a hunch there's going to be more to follow. And it's, you might not know it, but it's not all that comfortable up here because not everyone in our community agrees on everything and everything we do impacts people differently across our community. And so it is difficult to, to say we're going to do this because we have to or because it's the right thing to do. Are you prepared to sit up here and take the scowls and the heat and whatever comes along with making some, I'm telling you, there, there are going to be some very, very hard decisions that are going to be made here in the next few months. And can you stand up to that and where do you stand on, on these kinds of issues?
I, I, I have no problem with any of that. I mean, it's, they're, they're difficult issues at best, but they're necessary things. And I do it every day in my, in my job. I make difficult decisions. I have, there's controversy, there's things I have to, and, and unfortunately, it's not a popularity contest. You have to do what's best for the city. I mean, I, on the planning commission, I, I think I voted no for some things that other people wanted. I'm not afraid to do that. It, you have to do what's necessary for this city and for, to make it, make it what we all want it to be or better anyway. And the water thing is crucial. I mean, I lived in Chicago, we had Lake Michigan. We don't have that here. So we have to be, we have to be smart about it.
Well, if you're appointed, you'll be sworn in and then you'll be sworn out, just to note that that's, that's the sequence.
It happens to me already too, sorry, but I get that too.
Other questions, counsel?
Just the same one. Are you willing to be committed in all different aspects to the job?
Yes, I am. I mean, I, I, when I was on the planning commission for 10 years, I worked full-time at the county and came to the meetings and came prepared. And so yes, I'm, I don't have a problem being committed and coming and I won't be a absentee councilperson, I guess, is my answer to that.
So I got a question for her.
Please.
She said, said hello, I say, how are you? And then the other one she called as customers. I don't consider myself a customer as a taxpayer.
That's true. And you know what? These taxpayers are clients or whatever you want to call, yeah, I mean.
Or the payer, the taxpayer.
Yeah, and people are frustrated when they come to, nobody likes the assessor's office.
I've been there a few times.
I'm kind of afraid that I even said it in front of this whole group, but I had to. So, but you know, we do our best and, and we, we, I'm a public servant, that's what I do.
Yeah.
So.
And she was committed when we, during the planning commission.
Mayor? Did I work with you too?
Not on the planning commission, no, because I started in 2009.
Barely missed, right?
I think you just got off, yeah.
Dale, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Okay. Same question as before. Any challenges that you see that, in the way that the city's been governed in the last little while? And if so, what would that be and how would you improve it?
I don't, I don't really see any real challenges with the way the city's been governed. One of my things on the planning commission, and I, I know that, that I thought that when we notice up meetings, sometimes the public doesn't understand what we're noticing up and, and it's, it has a lot of the stat, you know, it says R1 this, and people don't really know what that means. And so maybe, you know, we, we look to what are our meeting notices? So people are more informed as to what we're really going to be talking about. I don't know. Or what you're going to be talking about. I'm sitting here assuming like it's a we. What you're going to be talking about. So maybe that. I mean, but really, no. I mean, I, you know, I, I think it's a great city to live in and I don't see too many glaring things.
Thank you. He opened the door, you can take your best shot.
No, no. I don't, I don't really have like a, an agenda or anything. I'm just wanting to be of service, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pamela Palmer? Oh, there you are.
The reason I wanted to apply for this position is just about like everyone here has mentioned. I think you've done a great job of diligently planning and building a city with citizens' comments that is a place I wanted to live. So I definitely want to keep it that way for myself, those that are here and those that are coming in the future. The main things I was concerned about though is it is challenging times and I gave a lot of thought to the fact that I want to be a part of changing the general plan and as we look at that, I want to be involved in all the things we think about as future growth comes along. And I'm so passionate about water. That's one thing. My husband, you know, he's so tired of me telling to turn off the faucet, but you know, I just got to tell him that. But as far as the general plan goes, I want to be part of the stewardship that maintains that character that I mentioned. Plans aren't just for land use. They should include our heritage, preserving our natural environment, that includes open spaces and dark skies, the types and placement of residential inventory that we have, where businesses and services are and what they might be, the architecture and the design and including landscaping and I think most importantly, an access for community connection. Plans should enhance the quality of life for all of the residents, the ones that are here now, the ones that are coming in the future. As far as future growth, the things I want to be a part of, of making a change or helping out is all growth, every piece of growth should be tied to water. And Mayor Hart, I am so excited from our community meeting when I learned that you're working with the Washington County Water Conservancy District and calling them on the carpet to make sure that all planned development now and in the future is tied to the supply of water that we have here in Washington County. I think that we, as a city in Ivans, should also be doing the same thing, that we know exactly how many residences are in 2022, being completed in 2021, and we've tied that to our water supply. I think too, Mayor, something that this county should consider is of all the plans we have for water and supply and where it comes from, to be responsible to the residents, we need a plan that does not include the Lake Powell Pipeline. We don't know that it's going to be built. Even if it is built, it's far down the road and we're going to be running into problems long before its water would come along. Also, future growth, attainable housing. We know we have to build it. The legislator has said, legislature has said that we do have to build that. I'd like to take a look at maybe incentives for duplexes or fourplexes. And perhaps those types of residents could be built within the city that we have these open plots now. Research shows that when you put attainable housing within established communities, the people that move into them get lots of benefits. Their neighbors are mentors for them. Their neighbors' childrens are mentors to their children. It's just beneficial that attainable housing isn't all located along Highway 91, you know, just in little complexes. I'm excited to be a part of taking a look at the land use maps and the zone changes. You know, if you've explained, Mayor, many times, we have these residential agricultural one to five acre holding lots. I, I'd like to be a part of deciding, you know, how those should be zoned so that they present more of a permanence for our residents. So we won't be seeing zoning changes coming up as much in the future because we have already listened to our community, taken their comments and, and redone the map and the zoning in a way that, you know, everybody's positive about. With water, again, I think Ivans has done an excellent job of implementing a lot of water conservation efforts. Your recent newsletter showed that we have decreased our water use considerably and that's a wonderful thing we've done as a community. The new, the new water development ordinance that you've put out there, I, I read through that and that adopts a lot of the things that the Washington County Water Conservancy District wants to do and proposes and I, I think that's just really good. But that is a lot for new development. I think that we should look at taking the same thing and doing it for existing homeowners. Perhaps the city can come up with programs and incentives where we take existing homes and help people replace their toilets and faucets with efficient options. Maybe we come up with some type of financial incentive to replace grass with zero-pitscaping landscapes. More, more encouraging of planting native plants. A lot of people question, have questions about me because I'm into that. Well, what are native plants? What, what can we use? Maybe educational opportunities in, in addition to incentives for planting those. And also an exciting thing that's happening, North Ogden and Park City have recently installed real-time water metering to all of their residents and that's a fabulous thing to do. It can be expensive, we need to take a look at that, but it allows the city and the residents to know exactly when water usage goes up in a home. You can look at it and track, oh, why do we have so much water usage today? Let's watch how we're using it. The people in the city that are governing it can say, wait a minute, we think there might be a water leak at this house because their water usage has spiked in the past two days. It's such a great thing, you know, we could talk to those cities. Dry wash reservoir. I know we don't have a lot to say in building that. I know we don't have a lot to say in building that, but as a city, I think we should have a lot of input on how that's used, you know? When it comes down to it, water is water. And, and to have a reservoir with secondary water, we don't want to encourage all kinds and lots of plantings and using it at a low price because it's still water. And at some point in time, perhaps that dry-wash reservoir needs to be converted to potable water because we've run out of it. And, and, you know, we need to keep that type of thinking in the back of our minds. I want to come too, as someone who, I do a lot of seeing what other cities are doing and investigating, and I like to think out of the box. So I thought to myself, you know, when we do a development in Ivans, it seems like they're little warrants, they have all these little walls around them. And I thought, wouldn't it be nice if like every development facing another development had an entry like a pedestrian roundabout? Where if you're strolling down the, your development, you can just go right into the next one, into the next one? So as, we can come together more as a community when we don't feel like we just live in, you know, this part of the city and that little development or the next. I think maybe too, we could take a look at working with Utah Open Lands a little bit more. They're a wonderful organization out of Park City and Salt Lake City. We do have a couple of farms in the city that are long established with a great heritage, great open space. Perhaps we as a city could have a presentation on easements and explain how the tax benefits from that can be substantial for a farmer or someone that wants to stay into farming.
Pamela, I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap it up.
Okay, one more statement, I'm sorry.
You're preemptively answering all the questions.
I want to try and answer all of your questions at once. The last thing I thought of is our dark sky and our night sky. We do have a little observatory here in Ivans. Perhaps we could form a astronomy club with all of our schools here and volunteers to have a dark sky programs throughout the year. So I think I've tried to answer all of your questions. The last one, Jenny, my husband and I just planned four camping trips through August. And being a total optimist, I said, now be sure we don't plan any of those on the first or the third Friday of the month because I might have to go to council meetings.
It'll be Thursday, so. But you can take Friday off too. So did, did all of them get answered?
I'd like, I'd like to ask my question.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just as you've observed in the last bit, last couple, few years, any challenges you've seen with how the city's been governed? And if so, what, what would you do differently?
The only thing that comes to my mind is I, I think perhaps we could do a little more to be engaged with the community. When we had the three meetings of dividing the Ivans into communities, and Mayor, you came and spoke, and we came here to the council chambers, a lot of people told me how wonderful that was. Perhaps each council member could take a little area of the city and every other month, meet with a group of citizens to talk more, just to answer questions and explain how government works and things like that. That's about the only thing, a little bit of communication. And Mayor, you asked if we could make a hard decision, and I think that is part of my answer too. You know, I just got a water bill where I used one-fourth of the amount of water this January that I used in 2021. But my bill was only $3.94 more. So even though I used one segment of water this year and four segments last year, I only paid four more extra dollars. I don't want my water bill to go up. But I think if, if I am sitting on council and I'm sure that we've had enough citizen comments and input, that I know exactly what's coming from our community, if I have to make a tough decision, at least I know I've heard everyone.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Please.
I just have another question. As I was listening to you, I noticed that you said that you want to be involved in changing the general plan. What specifically do you hope to change about the general plan?
I don't think a lot needs changing. Maybe that was the wrong word to use. I know you're going to be looking at it, revising it and updating it. The changing part probably would just come from those resident, or those agricultural areas, you know, that we would have to determine what type of zoning should they be, how do they fit in with surrounding communities and things like that. And probably then to take a look at where we do have attainable housing. You know, as I mentioned, I would, I would like to see that not just like some segmented area of the city, but, but more part holistically of the community. Thank you.
Mayor?
Please. In, in reading your application, Pamela, I, I think I've solved a mystery that has been bothering the mayor for quite a while. Mayor, Pamela is the woman who sent you the gas station ordinances from Sedona. You have wanted to thank the anonymous woman.
Was it Sedona or was it?
It was Scottsdale.
Awesome. That was you?
Yeah. Well, Glenn and I, we did some research, my husband.
So you all need to know this. We had ordinances in place, pretty restrictive, lighting ordinances and all. And when the application came in for Canyon Crossing, there was just a, an uproar over the possibility of anything like that going there. And once an application arrives, we can't change the rules, not even sitting up here. And so Pamela sent me these, these, this ordinance from Scottsdale, Arizona. And I read it and I thought, man, I wish that was our ordinance because it was fantastic. And it, it addressed that specific type of development. And I sent that in a long email to both the, the developer and, and his associates, and basically said, if you don't want to have picketers in front of everything with the day you open, I would send this to the architects and land planners and let that be their bible as they, as they put this project together. Now, there may be some of you who don't like Canyon Crossing even now. I know that you can see the gas pumps and on and on. I'll just tell you that under the ordinances that were in place, that could be significantly more impactful than it is. And so it's, I have, I've wanted to thank whoever did that, and I couldn't remember where it came from, 10,000 emails back, right? So yeah, thanks for solving that mystery. That is awesome.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me know that. I appreciate that.
Tremendous.
Anything else?
Thank you, Pamela.
Okay.
Is Patty here?
Yeah, she is.
We're, we're blowing her short meeting ideas to bits here. I'm going to go to Paul Bryson. Paul, I recognize you. Welcome.
Lance, I haven't spoken to you at all. I've spoken to the rest of you, however. Thank you for the opportunity again.
Close enough to the mic, please. Sorry.
And well, probably to answer one question that Jenny has right off the bat about dedicated. Number one, I was fortunate enough to apply on the previous opening that we had that was the same process. And I was fortunate enough to be nominated, but didn't quite muster enough to pass, to get actually appointed to the board. I came up 173 votes shy in the last election, but I only spent 80% of what the rest of you did. So I know you will appreciate the frugality of my campaign.
It was better than mine.
And, and here I am again. I don't think you can question my intent to, or, or want to serve in this community and, and what I've gone through to get here. My background, I, again, I made some errors when I first approached you. I, I may have had a four-page resume, but if you recall, I said I didn't have it all down there. And I didn't. I was an architect to start off. I didn't like line drawing, drawing because I went to work. At 10:30, the roach coach comes, I go out and get my little snack, go to lunch. 2:30, I go out to the roach coach, have my little snack and go home at 5:00. It wasn't for me. So I became a Los Angeles police officer. And I worked there for 20-plus years, retired as a detective. I helped design their computer system. I worked at their police academy training officers, writing training material for the Los Angeles Police Department. I worked their management department, management and orders. I was the chief's aide. My first day out in the streets as a full police officer were the 1968 Watts riots. It was a baptism of fire. When you talk about, Mr. Mayor, the fact that it's a tough job, you've never faced down a gun. I've had two of them. I still remember the two men I, that, that faced down a gun. One was in my stomach, and I made a mistake. That was Johnny Liggins. The other one was Lafayette Moore after he sliced his wife's face. He came out with about six other people and pointed a gun at me. I think I can handle somebody swearing at me because that's happened even more times. So in, in that particular situation.
So Paul, the, the specific purpose in the introduction is to, is to state, why, why, what is, where is your interest in, in applying for this?
My interest is I think I can provide something that no one else can. My background and experience, I did construction work, I, I rehabbed houses. I'm a Realtor, but I do it part-time. One of the issues that you brought up, Mayor, was I pretty much stay with, with law enforcement officers and nurses. My wife's a nurse. And so that's, that's what, some of the areas. I have some real concerns about the police department now. I've seen some things that have been broadcast in the press about what's going on in law enforcement right here in St. George at the university. And I've done research on it, and it's very concerning to me. I will go out and ride along with the officers to find out what's going on. I see that some of the investigation or some of the enforcement is not the way the statute reads. And I would like to find out how that's working and why it doesn't work. So when it comes to that, I'm concerned with trying to save money for the, for the city. Right now, I, I brought up to Sue the fact that I had a concern about the enforcement of the lighting statute. Who does that? How much does it cost? Is there a way to make it better? Yes, there is. Okay? There are, there are people out there that already have all the information about a house. You already know about that. When you get your bids in, what happens? You have a list of all the lighting that's there. You can find out whether or not it's compliant with dark skies. And that information can then be brought in digitally and kept as a permanent record in our, in our system. I've also seen things that, as you know also, when you build a home, you guys get the, the plans. Okay? Are they ever digitized? And do you keep those records? Because after about five years, they go away. But when you have to go and get a remodel, you know nothing about it. Also, law enforcement, if they need to know about something about that house, in case there's a situation that comes up, those plans are available to them. So it's a life-saving thing. It's a money-saving thing. It's the way I've always worked in all of my careers. Okay? I was a full-time police officer, but I worked part-time in these other jobs that I had, and I kept them for years and years and years. I was a high school teacher for almost five years in the Los Angeles Unified School District. So I know those problems too. And I know also how, how a school works and how the teachers are supposed to do certain types of things. So when it comes down to these things, I have a dedication, all of my life, I was a scout. I have donated my time and efforts in public service.
Awesome. We need to get to questions.
Okay.
So I'm going to open that to the council.
Well, Mayor, Paul, I'm just so disappointed. You knew my three questions and you've answered them all. I think this is going to happen from now on, right?
You haven't really specifically addressed other than to say that you're, you're a tough guy and can make tough decisions and.
I, well, my whole thing in regards to that is, I don't think that, I go back to the riots, okay? And the Cohen Commission put out five volumes talking about community support. I think that we need to go out and we need to have more community-oriented meetings at schools, at churches, even out in the park. And we need to bring up those things. It will shorten the period of time for the council meetings also because there is a lot of discussion. And I think that we can get things done a lot better. There's one thing I've never heard, okay? And it's not a criticism to any of you, but it's something I like to present to people. I like to say, please, when you come to this meeting, don't just bring a complaint. Don't just bring an idea. Bring a solution. The solution may not be taken by us, but we will explain to you why we went this way. But we may say, wow, that's the greatest solution we've ever had. But we don't hear people ask for solutions. And that's, I think, something that we need to ask. Put surveys out. Ask people for solutions as well as what would you like to have done? We don't have all the answers.
Nice segue. There's a survey on the city website about Utopia, and I want every one of you to respond to it. It's a huge thing potentially for the city, and we want to know where you stand. Okay.
I, I think you were kind of addressing my question maybe just now, right? With having more community meetings and.
Oh, yes. We, I, I've set up based, we call them community-based policing. We can have community-based government. We don't, I don't see that in any of the other cities here. We've even gone away from community-based policing throughout the United States, and that was brought up. So it's, it's just something, you know, that I think that we need to do. And I think I bring that to the board.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service. Sharon Gillespie. There you are. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Kind of hang close to the mic if you would.
I will try. I have such a voice that I've rarely needed a microphone in my career, but we'll give it a good old college try.
Your kids know when mom's calling, huh?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, they do, definitely. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for this opportunity. So in my statement, I'll just read a little bit of it briefly, and then I will also try and preempt your questions since I know what they are and make your life a little bit easier too. So my husband and I chose Ivans. Five years ago, when we started contemplating the potential of retirement, we looked all over the West, United States, and, and seriously considered many factors into where we wanted to build our forever home. We landed in a lovely piece of dirt in Ivans, in the Palisades, very close to here. The beauty, the recreational opportunities, the safety, the low crime, the nighttime initiative, the cost of living, were just some of the driving factors that brought us here. We came from Seattle, so we've seen a different side of the way things can be. And we, we will be residents here three years, here in April. So one of the questions is, you know, I'm certain one of the questions that will come up by many in this committee is, but you don't have any city or government experience. What I have is over 40 years of business experience, affording a lot of transferable skills that I think are applicable in this role. Fiscal decision-making, difficult decision-making, budget management, understanding and interpreting codes and statutes, collaboration across all levels, strong listening, verbal and written communication skills, and an executive presence. I think these are transferable skills that can help serve the city of Ivans. And they served me in leadership roles where I, in, in the last four opportunities of my career, I had no knowledge of the company, the industry, the business focus, anything. So my goal was to approach each with a strategy of quickly becoming a student, seeking first to understand, not coming in with a judgment, not coming in with a plan, but coming in with a strategy to learn. And that I have found successful over the years. And I also never shied away from saying, I don't know. And I also never shied away from saying, I don't know, but I will find out and I'll get back to you within twenty-four hours. The other question that I'm sure comes up in the room possibly, or with the council members, is that, but you haven't lived here your whole life. You don't get us. You didn't grow up here. And you're right. I value the individuals who have lived here a long time and that the history and the richness that they bring to this community and to the world and to this membership. We chose to live here and I think that makes a difference too. We chose to live here. And what I bring to the table, I believe, should be considered a fresh perspective and an approach to problem-solving. Again, in my last four business roles, I hadn't grown up in those companies. I hadn't started at the bottom and worked my way up and had the history and the currency to grow in those roles. But what I offered was an intelligence and an expertise in certain skills that afforded me success. I was afforded the opportunity by a sitting council person who I've had several conversations with over the last few months around my desire to get more involved, right? And so, the question comes up, why? Why do I want this role and why now and what do I hope to accomplish? So, I have lived a life in the business world of servant leadership. It is my legacy. It is the paramount on which I stand. I serve at the pleasure of the people who work for me, who I work with, and who count on me every day to get up and do my job. So, my goal in being here is to serve the people of Ivans and help manage our growth effectively. As I've looked at leaving corporate America and the roles and servant leadership I've had over forty years, I searched my heart on what's next, right? I think many of us have been in that seat. And I think serving the people of Ivans struck me as kind of a sign that this is the right thing and the right time in my life and the right next step for me to carry forward. I believe I bring the qualities and skills of situational leadership, collaboration, which I think is critical, teamwork, communication, and problem-solving. In answering your question, Mayor, difficult decisions, absolutely. I make difficult decisions every day and they are not always popular. What I try to do is, again, seek first to understand, look at all aspects of a problem and all angles of the problem, and communicate effectively and efficiently the problem and the varying solutions and how we're going to move forward. I've gotten beaten up a lot in forty years and I just always tell my husband I've got a lot of scar tissue, so, you know, I can take it. I think that one of the ways that we can address the water issue effectively, and I'm very passionate about it, moving down here from excess water to the desert, is communication. And that is my core strength. In making a problem that's difficult understandable, and I think that's where we can be better as a council and a government, I always like to use the phrase, I like to bring it down to kindergarten language. And I don't want to condescend to people, but that helps me understand the problem better and understand the solutions that we can bring to the table. So, I think that's one thing that we can do better as a community and as a city government. And I think that will help make this difficult change a little bit easier pill to swallow, if you will.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, Mayor, I'm gonna solve the second mystery for tonight.
Uh-oh. What'd I do?
A sleuth on the counter.
What did I do?
I am the mystery council person that met Sharon last fall. And after talking to her for a while, I said, gosh, you just have to get involved in this community. So, I think you answered pretty much my questions, but just quickly, a little detail, what would you want to accomplish in the next couple of years?
Well, I think, first of all, you have to seek first to understand. I have to learn. I have to become a student. I don't have experience in city government, so it's gonna take a lot of work on my effort to understand what the issues are, what the problems are, what the job is, what the process is. So, understanding that and really getting to know the community. So, the, from the bottom up, learning the job from the bottom up and where, then defining kind of, once I understand where I can best contribute. I mean, my first passion, just from growing up for twenty-five years in the ballet, is the arts, right? That is one of my true passions. But there might be better ways that I contribute once...
Thank you.
Is that kind of an answer? I have to say, in forty years, I've had amazing interviews and I've had multiple panel interviews, but never with an audience. So, this is a first.
But you've been in ballet, so you've had people...
I have, yes.
What?
Oh, yeah. Give me a microphone and a stage and I'm a happy girl.
Sharon, same question. Any challenges or concerns you've seen in how the city's been governed in the last little while?
No, like I said, Dennis, I think that we can communicate better. I loved the town halls that we did. I think we ought to do more of them because I came away from that having a better understanding and increased knowledge of what's going on and how challenging redoing the master plan is and how challenging the water issue really is. And I'm just, you know, hitting the bare minimums on that. So, I think more communication, I think more town halls, more round tables, more socials, if you will, that get people involved in the knowledge and simplifying the information and communicating it out, I think will just come back fourfold to help us.
Thank you.
I think she kind of...
Covered the ground?
Covered it, so...
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Kaplan is my name and I'm grateful to be here with you. I have to admit, after reviewing all the applications and resumes, I seriously considered withdrawing my application because of the immense talent and capabilities and diverse experiences of every one of the candidates. As a citizen, I'll just say, I would be delighted if any of them represented us. Very, very talented and thank you for the, those of you who studied a lot to prepare for this, you did a great job representing yourselves and your perspectives. And I am grateful to the city council and the mayor for what you all have done. I have no particular concerns about your leadership or your performance. I have no constructive recommendations at this point. As has been said, this is a learning process. If we're going to serve effectively, we have to learn. Learn the issues and learn the mind and will of the people that we represent and that is what I would be willing to do. I'm accustomed to dealing with difficult decisions, making choices, decisions that are not always popular. In my career, that has been the case and in my public service, that has been the case. So, I have no fear about making difficult decisions, whatever they may be. Water, I love. I grew up in Miami, Florida. I was a scuba diver at ten years old. There frankly is nothing I love more than water, but I also love conserving it. And we have to. And I agree with the statement that was made earlier, I think Pam made it, that you cannot count on the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure...
The Lake Alpide Dream?
Yes, the lake, yeah. You cannot, I wasn't sure who actually made the statement, but what, whoever did, it was great. Congratulations. Because it is true, you can't anticipate that. There's no assurance that it will happen. So, we have a certain amount of water. We hope to acquire more, but what we have is what we have and we have to learn to live within our means with respect to water. So, I fully support mitigation of use and elimination of waste and new strategies that will allow us to accommodate growth. Growth is inevitable because people want to be here. And also, we have to recognize the property rights of landowners and those who would like to invest here. So, my view on growth is that it needs to be responsible. It needs to be meticulously planned and managed and executed, which is the primary reason that I would like to serve on the council. Because I believe that an involvement with the master plan is really my passion, looking at what needs to happen, considering the possibilities, taking the long-term view as stewards of this remarkable place. There really is nothing like Ivans anywhere in the world, nothing like it. We live in a gem of a community. And those that have preceded us as pioneers and public servants have done a wonderful job. My interest is in simply participating in the meticulous planning and the sometimes difficult decision-making that will be involved in creating a master plan that would be the envy of the country. I am available. I'm retired. I worked hard and now I'm retired, but I would be committed to serving on the council. I hope I've anticipated your questions and been brief as well.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any others, council?
Mayor?
Please.
So, Stephen, in addition to your volunteer public service efforts, it's clear from your application that your business and entrepreneurial success makes it evident that you can accomplish any goals you set. So, I'd really like you to just touch on it a little bit on what kind of goals would you have for the next couple of years? What do you see?
Yes, well, I think it's been articulated well by others tonight that we do need to listen. And that would be a goal that I have, to listen. I am a listener. I love to first hear and understand and make sure that whatever, a goal would be to make sure that whatever decision was made, however a vote was cast, it was based on a comprehensive input and a thorough effort to really listen and understand. Another specific goal really goes back to the master plan, creating something that will guide the future, refine, and letting that sort of waterfall to everything else that we do, enhancing ordinances so that we can anticipate certain types of requests and needs in the community. And I guess another goal would be simply to make sure that we are effective stewards of these resources and that we're successful financially and operationally, that we retain the value of the treasure that we have, the view sheds, the access to public property, and at the same time, preserve the rights of property owners and meet the needs of all the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
I got a question for you. When you say reserve the rights of property owners, what does that mean to you?
Well, it means that there are constitutional rights and there are rights defined by ordinances. There are rights that I'm sure the Planning Commission and the city council has preserved effectively in this community as projects have been brought forward. But I do believe that people who own land and have invested in land have a right to develop it. And so, the question is, how much development? How can we accommodate? What are the water requirements? And what are the density needs of the community? What can we accommodate is a big question and it needs to be studied thoroughly. But in doing that, we have to always preserve the rights of investors and landowners. That's what it means to me.
I think that answered it. It means, yeah, to me, it means that, like, we got a community that, you mentioned ordinances, you got your constitution rights, and I kind of look at it as a family. You know, a family has certain arrangements and ordinances per se or rules and they've agreed to stay in that family and have those rights. So, sometimes I think the word property rights means something different than what it really means. It means you bought a piece of property in this community and you've agreed by these rules. It's like living in HOA, right?
Right.
Those are your rights. Those are the property rights you've chose to obtain. So, that's what I, and that's why I wanted to verify what you're saying, but thank you.
That's a beautiful view of what they are.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, council. We will now move into the discussion phase of this. Would remind the council that if there is anything that has to do with competence or character, that we would, I would take a motion to adjourn to a closed meeting. I don't see any need for that, but you may, you may express your thoughts at this point. By the way, and there is one, while I'm waiting, just so you all understand, this is not a mayoral appointment. This is different than me coming to the council, making an appointment for somebody to serve on the Planning Commission, for example, and then it's advice and consent, the council still has to approve that. This actually takes place through a motion by one of the council members and a vote being taken on that. I believe that there perhaps ought to be some discussion before that occurs, but it's up to the council as to whether or not that does occur. And it's gonna occur.
You just took it away. No, I wasn't. I was just gonna say, as I agree too, as everyone else has, that there is a plentiful knowledge here of, and each one of them could portray things a lot better than I could, you know, in presenting things, but I think they're all, they all have their own expertise as I look at every one of them, because there isn't one up here that I don't think could benefit the city, because every one of them has their own little niche. So, I, you know, I think next time, there'll be a good running for somebody, so. But as I've, as I've went through all these, and obviously, I've, I've seen, I mean, Shane 's been here eleven, twelve years, you know, and served hard and had done a lot of good for the city. We have these people that have moved in that have this knowledge that I don't have, you know? I noticed two of them are from Chicago, so, I don't know if that's good or bad. I've been there once, under the Big Bean is what I, so. But, so, they all have this knowledge and the one, the one that I, and I've been kind of looking at real heavily is Adele because of her, she's already, she's already served in Ivans for eight years and she brings a knowledge that is, I think, is important right now for our community, especially she has, already has a running knowledge of the general plan. She has a knowledge of how zoning ordinances work. She has a knowledge of the community because she works in the county every day. And I knew when we were talking with her on Planning Commission, she would bring important information to us that we wouldn't get from any of us. And, you know, and so, you know, I think, I think that's what helped the city with what we're trying to accomplish right now. And she has, with that knowledge of the county, it helps us make decisions because she's in a situation where she hears information, gathers information that's useful to our community, because we're, people always say we're the end of the road, which I disagree with and I'm okay with too at the same time, so. But, so, that's, that's kind of where, because every one of those, I'm telling you, if there's a couple of them, I'd like to talk to help me in my business, so.
So, council, you have the legal right to make a motion at any time. I would simply ask that we go through a discussion that allows everyone to render their thoughts and opinions, but if you make one, I will act on it, so. Should we move to you, council member?
Mayor?
Yes?
Then I'll make a motion, but then we'll have discussion if we get a second. I move that we appoint Shane McDonald to be, fill the term of Sue Cordhammer with his term expiring at the end of 2023.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that based on some information that I'd like to share really quickly. The reason I've decided to do that is because mostly what you had mentioned earlier about that there are gonna be a lot of really, really important decisions that are gonna have to be made in the next few months. And a comment that was made, I think it was Sharon, that said that they'll have to learn the job from the bottom up reminded me of when I first got on council. And I think it does take a little while to learn the process and to learn what's going on. And I am very confident that Shane will be able to continue that because he has worked with us until very recently and knows what's going on in the community and what is needed and can help us with those decisions. So, that's why I'm choosing to second that.
So, discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to start by sort of echoing what Lance was saying about Adele. I mean, she was really the glue that held us together a lot on the Planning Commission. She did her homework, she was really thoughtful, her experience as an attorney, don't hold that against you, the, it, it, it gave you a sort of a rigorous approach to things, but you were also just open and listened and heard all points of view before you came to any conclusions. Shane has served the, the city for 12 years, and in talking to him tonight, I think your, your really number one goal is to, is to have the city have a strong presence on the solid waste board, and I do believe that's going forward, where he would still be able to stay on the solid waste board even if he's not on the city council and stay as chair at least till however long that term ends, is that correct? I mean, we are moving forward on that, right?
It's supposed to be.
And so, so I, I, I would prefer to be greedy and have Shane sort of be there as a representative of the city in addition to having five other people beyond the city council. It's sort of like we've got six, six one for free.
So what I'm hearing shape up here is that we have two council members, and we do have a motion on the floor, but we're still in discussion. We have two of our council members that appear to favor one of the applicants, Adele Murphy, and two who, and, and a motion in place and a second to appoint Shane McDonald. So that puts me in a, in a position that I would really rather not be in, because I don't believe, I don't believe it was ever intended that the mayor should pick members of his council, but that's the way that the, that the statute, statute goes. And I've got to tell you, I came here this evening committed to keeping an open mind and listening to all of the interviews and the answers to questions before I made my final decision, and that I was going to let my heart guide me in, in my final decision. But I will tell you, I've been predisposed ever since this vacancy was created with, to believe that it really isn't my vote or shouldn't be my vote, that, that I was elected to represent the entirety of our community and we just had an election. So that's a, that's a very difficult thing for me to, to set aside, because there's nothing that reflects the will of, of the community more accurately than an election. And so that was, I, I came here fully intending to use that rationale. Now, having said that, there are many, many things about this. First of all, I could vote aye on any one of these seven folks who came up here. I wish the council would simply decide this without, without my involvement. So at this moment, I have got to set friendships aside. Steve Kaplan is a dear friend. Shane has become a dear friend, serving together for many, many years, and others of you I've come to know through your participation in public hearings and so forth, and I have the highest regard for all of you. One of my great fears is that I have tried my hardest since I was elected mayor to unify our city. When I, when I first came into office, it was so apparent to me that it was Township versus Kianda, and that mindset has been there whether in subconscious or conscious for as long as I've lived here. I've tried to get to know our friends in Kianda and participate with them in, in events and, and accept invitations to come out there and speak. And I feel like that, that we have perhaps at least a more unified community now than we have had. And so the, the idea of unification of our city, to continue the progress in that is a big deal to me. And so I, I'm.
You've lost your mic.
Sorry. Well, it's still.
It'll come back in fifteen seconds.
Like getting to the climactic line and the mic goes off.
I think they all.
And so I am going to follow my heart and I'm going to vote nay.
Mayor, we're still in.
We're not, not even voting.
We're in discussion still.
Is there any more?
Ah, yes, because I haven't had a chance to speak.
Please.
I, I just simply made the motion.
Thank you.
And, and I took that prerogative since you opened that door.
I did.
So I echo some of the same things that have been shared, those that have put themselves up for, to be part of the city council. I applaud you and think really all of you would do a wonderful job. I will say that I have worked with Adele on the Planning Commission, and I think Adele is wonderful. I know there's others. Steve Kaplan was a chair of the Board for Intermountain Healthcare. If you know what's happening with healthcare in our community, Steve has a lot to do with that. So kudos to him and his leadership. Chris Albrecht, new to our community, wonderful, energetic, wonderful person in our community. Pamela, I don't know you, but you've given, we've, I've looked back at my emails and you've sent me about six or eight emails, and, and that's been very helpful in, in the progress, as you talk about Canyon Crossing. Paul, I was familiar with when he came back before, and I was there in LA in the 92 riots. So I guess we, we share that, and our community, we back the blue, and, and we see what's happening in our country where we're defunding things and kind of going the wrong way. No offense to Seattle, but we're grateful that we live here, and we all really, to your point, Mayor, I, I too want unity and love in our community and, and working together. And everyone here, we really all want the same thing, right? We all want to have a wonderful place for, for us to live, for our children to be able to afford to live and to continue forward. My, my reason for nominating Shane is, is coming from a logical position, and, and we've read the hundreds of emails that have been shared, maybe a hundred, many for Pamela. Yeah, maybe you've gotten more. But, you know, what kind of a split? Adele, Pamela, you, you're kind of these, you're getting, you're the popular vote, okay? If we have a, and, and that's a tribute to, to both of you, and, and you should be great, you know, proud of that, the confidence that everyone has in you. But the logical approach that I've taken and is consistent with in the past, there, we did just have an election. It just happened 90 days ago, and Shane put himself out there. The others that are here tonight, you didn't. I'm not faulting you, it's not a.
Paul did.
Oh, Paul did? Okay, in the primary?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Paul. I, my, my mistake. I didn't mean to offend.
I just brought up.
Yeah.
I spent less money than you did.
And Mayor, sorry, I'm just collecting my thoughts. So there's been some feedback in the emails. Certainly there's several, you know, people in our community are like, I don't, I don't like Shane, you know, or he, and, and I, you know, and I think some of the, some of the things that have been shared about diversity, I can't think of a more diverse person than Shane McDonald. He, he's plainspoken, country boy, speaks from his heart, you know, liberty-loving, freedom-loving kind of person, which I think most of us are. He, the, the election, there, this was not a, what's the word, on the incumbents, you know? I think there was some, you know, information shared, we saw a lot of social media about the night sky and different things. You think back in the community and the time that Shane has been serving, and also Mayor for you as well, it's a compliment to you and to Adele and to me and everyone who's been working here. Not one of our applicants shared that they had any concerns with how we've been governing here in the city of Ivans. That includes Shane McDonald. And so where the election was 49, 46 votes is what kept Shane out of seat number three, and it happened to be this time around, there was two seats available instead of three. Had there been three seats, Shane would have been elected and he'd be sitting on the council, but that wasn't part of that rotation. So 46 votes, there were 190 ballots that were not counted, that were, you know, they weren't certified, they weren't cured, or they were thrown out because they came in late, et cetera. Now, we don't know if that 190 would have been all for someone other than Shane, we don't know that, but to say this was a, a sort of a, a call to remove Shane from office, I just think is not accurate. It, it's 46 votes, and I, in the past, I have run and was not elected, my first try, then wanted to be appointed, was not selected. You know, it's hard, it's difficult, you put yourself out there. But this, you know, just to kind of cover some of these things, the various applicants, it's a jewel in the desert, it's a gem, completely and instantly fell in love, moved to, moved to Ivans because of the values and, and the thoughtful planning and careful planning of the community. These are things that the applicants wrote in their application, chose Ivans as our retirement forever home. These are some of the driving factors, safety, low crime, night's tight, night sky. These are things that, that Shane has been involved in. There is a representation, we're trying to, we don't want to fractionalize our community, we have representation. You have a developer of Kianda on the city council, what more representation there? What, what a, what a, what a great insight, and we can, we can have, draw on his expertise. And Mike, where, where your ability to act, you know, be a community organizer and, and, you know, support for, for all the things that we're doing and the good research that you do. So that's, that's the reason we have, we have us, we have, we've had an election, it was very close, and we, we would be ignoring 1,500, the desire of 1,500 people in our community if we did not appoint Shane on the council. And I would just say to Adele, I love Adele, and I think she would be wonderful, just as others would be, and would very much encourage you to, to run in two years, and you'd have my support.
Mayor? Mayor? First, I, I just want to make it clear that I appreciate all the things Shane has done for the city, and I like Shane, but I hold a little bit of a grudge against you, Shane. I got on the Planning Commission and a few months later you bail on me and you go to the city council, so, but we could get over that. I'd like to sort of address the, the election issue. Dennis, I, I understand what you're saying, but you're saying that had there been three seats available, Shane would have won. Not necessarily because there would have been another person that would be running against him. The point is that Shane didn't win the election, the, the voters didn't want the incumbents and just chose some new blood. Well, I'm not such a new blood, but, and so I, I think that the election argument is, is not a valid argument, there is no consolation prize, there, there would have been somebody else running. If there was an election happening today instead of this process that we're going through, who knows what would have happened? It's not guaranteed, you know, and so that's not an issue. The, the, the other thing is I don't think, this isn't specifically to do with Shane, but you were sort of addressing it in, in a way that it was, everybody did come up here and nobody really had anything negative to say about the way the city council has been running over the last number of years. And so the inference there is that, well, see, Shane's did a good job too on the city council. Well, we shouldn't be patting ourselves on the back too much. These are people that stood up here and they're looking to get hired by us. Do you think they're going to say anything bad about our performance?
Those are my comments.
Mayor?
I'm going to give Jenny a chance first.
Okay.
Did you have anything to say?
To add to that? I have a lot of things that I want to say, I'm not sure if I ought to or where I ought to go with this. I still feel like, and I, as well, I feel like Adele would be amazing, I feel like Pam, from what I can see, would be amazing. The list goes on and on to everyone that I have listened to, and so this is very difficult, but I, I still stand by the fact that I believe, given the importance of what is going to be happening in our community, what is happening, that we need somebody on here who understands what has been going on and what is going on and what will go on, and I think that Shane fits that bill. So I am, I am still in support of Shane.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to address some, Mike kind of, or some of these thoughts, but I can tell you from personal experience, that thought process that Dennis is using, I disagree with totally, because I was one of those applicants, and we sat there for a whole time saying we wanted someone that has served on the Planning Commission, we wanted someone that ran for city council, and then all of a sudden someone gets nominated, and then the, the thought process come up that, hey, he's the next running, and I'm going to tell you, I wasn't running against Derek to use that thought process. Adele, Pam, all them are not, they're not running against Shane to run that, to know what the numbers really are. So I, I don't think that num, that means anything, because it, we weren't there to represent ourself, and so I'm going to still, you know, I think Adele has been a person that I was on the Planning Commission with, I think she understands already, like you said, Jenny, she, she kind of keeps her pulse on a lot of things around here, and I think she'd be a good person and to, you know, to fulfill the position. And I do want to say, today someone asked me about Shane, and I says, Shane, if I need, if I needed something done with, for Shane, I trust him 100% and I'd send him over to get my car work done, because I do, he's that type of guy, and I told him that today. And so I do, I do, ran for city council because I had some issues with some philosophy, okay? And so that's why I'm sitting here, because I, there was some issues I thought about that I thought the city was going away from what we had done for years.
Thank you. Mayor, and since I've been called out by two of the council members.
Carry on.
I just, just, just simply say, 1,500 people voted for Shane, so you cannot say that means nothing.
No.
Okay.
But, but they weren't running with him to know that if they would have got that many votes, so.
Well, the fact is that in two years, however this vote goes, you're going to decide who the, who the council member on that seat is going to be. And so this is a, this is an interim decision that's being made, and everyone here has got their reasons, and eloquently expressed, by the way. Honestly, I hope when the vote comes that the council decides without my participation. I emphasize, it was never intended for the mayor to decide who was going to sit on this council, and I have, I have the ultimate respect for Shane and believe that he's done a wonderful job for this city. The things that, that a lot of the naysayers haven't seen are the, the things that Shane has quietly done in the background that have built this city. He, now Shane and I, if I was picking purely on, on who my views most coincide with, that's not Shane, because Shane is an independent thinker and rarely, unless I'm right, rarely agrees and, and votes necessarily that way, and I, I'm ready to strangle him whenever it comes to a discussion on arts. And, and like I say, however this vote goes, I hope that Shane knows how deep my respect is and so forth. Because I'm put in this untenable position, and I want you to know, it's gut-wrenching. If you think this is fun, you're sick. So at this moment in time, unless there's further discussion, I have a motion on the floor and a second, and that motion needs to reflect the, the resolution.
Okay. So you want me to state it again for the record?
Yes, you need to do that.
Okay, I, I move that we fill the midterm vacancy on the city council, resolution number 2022-03R, resolution of Ivan City, Utah, pointing Shane McDonald to fill the midterm vacancy that expires the end of 2023.
Thank you.
Does the second stand?
Yes, the second stands.
This requires a roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor.
Aye.
And Councilmember Scott.
Nay.
And the mayor votes nay.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
You legally can, yes.
I move that we, uh, move that we fill the midta, midterm vacancy on the Ivan City council. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero-three R, resolution of Ivan City, Utah, appointing Adele Murphy, city council, to fill the midterm vacancy expiring twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote once again. Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor.
Aye.
And Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
I don't have to break a tie, again.
Congratulations.
So congratulations, Adele. I usually don't tolerate that, but she's earned it. And all I can say is, Steve, Pamela, all of you, what an incredible... I, I honestly cannot imagine a city that would be blessed with this kind of talent in this situation. Little as we are, man, we got it all, right? So, um, the, that motion carries, and Pam, I believe the matter of order now is to, is for Carrie to swear you in.
Adele.
Adele. What did I say?
Pam.
Oh! That happened at St. George, now I'm in the hot seat, right? Adele, sorry. If you'll step forward, please.
Would you raise your arms in square, please? You can't after me. I solemnly swear. I solemnly swear. Or affirm that I will support, or affirm that I will support, obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take your seat. Mayor, can we have a brief recess?
Can we just have a motion to adjourn, please?
Yeah.
So moved.
Yeah. Motion to recess, anyway, I can call it myself. We stand in recess, thank you.
Now you have to sit by.
Five minutes.
I just want to go throw a motion forward.
No. Thank you. Thank you. I hope you know I did, oh, absolutely not, I, I. Now they need to give me water, so I'm just. Yes, you do need a water. Let me go get you water. I feel bad. I feel bad for Shane. Where's the refrigerator, right? I gotta get her water.
Hold, let me get it.
Oh, well, Ca- Carrie's getting it. Oh, is she? I saw her wave or something, yeah. I feel bad.
It's okay.
Seriously, I do, I. I, I really respect you and what you've done here, and I hope I can fill the shoes. I mean, so I'm gonna try, and I may be calling you, and you might have to, like, help me out a little here and there.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, all right. And you know whose birthday you share, too?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep. Thank you. Yes, I, I do, I do recognize you, and we're all with the little basting things, but yeah. You know, you're ten years, so we'll see. Bellevue, and I think I knew that in one of my conversations with you. Yeah, it's your primary. And you got your exemption. Yes, good, good. You're welcome. That's what I do, I'm, that's, I do a lot of that, so.
It ain't fun all the time, I'll tell you that. Never mind her. No. It's, it's my job.
I know. I will be, don't worry, don't worry. You can't get rid of me that easy. I'm like a bad copper penny, I turn them again. You're gonna be back, right? I hope so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Elections are really the way this ought to happen.
I understand.
Wish that was happening right now.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. For the communication, I appreciate it. Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. I know it isn't easy on your side. It happens in two years, I don't know.
You just have to stay, huh?
Yeah, what, I don't know, did anybody second the motion? Just kidding.
Congratulations. We do okay?
Mm-hmm. I'll talk to you all later. Thank you for making the hard decisions. I will continue to support you. So I'm gonna get you that, I'll give you that part. And then you guys will get me an email and all that stuff, yeah. I'm excited. Thank you.
Right on all your taxes.
I can breathe now.
You were like stressed, but I thought you were a little more, you know.
Do you think I was stressed?
You were sitting there like a little kid.
Well, I was kind of like, well, at the end there, I was, no, I, I really.
I know, I know, but, but it does make you feel, it does make you feel, you know what I mean? Yeah. No, I don't care though, I won't, I know you, that's why.
We're gonna be a team. You're warm, it means you guys are warm.
I had this coat on, with that coat on, you're gonna be.
I'm always the hot one. I haven't been cold since two thousand eight.
I don't know.
You guys got a lot of stuff. I did read the agenda. I did read the whole schedule. I did make copies of everything, though.
This is the one that's gonna take the longest.
You guys just.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you're amazing. I think you should, you should definitely run.
Where do you live at?
Over in the heart. Sorry, I'm just so used to saying that. Yeah, but I'm gay in Palestine.
Okay.
I'm in the poor man's Palestine.
So, my sister lived around that place.
Yeah.
So she was the second house in, but now that's her niece.
Oh my God.
Norm, I don't know if you know, Norma Jody. Her, her daughter's Trista, she's very, very nice. But she bought Jody, built her house down there. She's very good. She's very good. But, no, you got a very good way with your words, I know.
There's a lot of conversation going on.
Congratulations, by the way.
Does it? Does it? Look, I'm just, it's front of me.
Really, all by itself?
Here.
Where'd everybody go?
Oh, mic's not on. Mic's off, because it's on YouTube, you can't shut YouTube off.
Okay, mic's back, get, get your mic on. Oh, I thought this was mine.
Well, you know.
I get stereo?
More volume's better.
Mayor, I got two. I'm sorry to have put you in that position, but I felt like that.
You only have one. You're the city manager. Oh, that's right.
You're the city manager and city attorney, so you should have two.
I should have the lower chair.
It looks that way, because I'm so short.
Wonder if this is up all?
Literally.
Yeah, no. No, I see. I can still touch.
Here we go.
Quietly calling. Calling this meeting back to order, and we're going to move to our second discussion item, item five B. This certainly sounds easy. We're going to consider, uh, funding Rees Across America in Ivans. And once again, do I have our Rees Across America rep here?
Yeah, there is.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Three of you, yes. Uh, you're welcome to kind of come forward in case there are any questions. Oh! Welcome.
This is Anton Coleman.
Meet him.
And Tiffany Martino, his granddaughter.
I know Tiffany, and I know you, yes.
In order for the council to make a proper decision, let me give you a very brief history. About four years ago.
Michael, thank you.
About four years ago, I, uh, I went to an activity, barbecue daughter of American Revolution we're having. Was out at, uh, Harley Davidson, at the exit to I-15. And when they got done, they were collecting funds for cemeteries in St. George, Utah, for St. George Cemetery, town equivalent, and Shewwitz. So when they finished, a lady came over and they said, well, who's covering the rest of the cemeteries? We can't do anymore, we got our hands full now. So I asked them, can we, can we take it over? She says, you can, but not till next year, because you'll have to have it organized by Monday at midnight, including the money. So I wanted to find out, so I talked to Benny Sorensen, and he says, you guys had at that time, I believe it was ninety-seven veterans. Santa Clara had a hundred and twenty-nine. We were able to get it together, so we gave a presentation to every one of your veterans in Ivans on the eighteenth of December that year, their rees. We did the same thing at Santa Clara. Well, I get caught up in things, so I got ahold of the Hurricane Valley Support Foundation, it's a 501(c)(), because I don't want to handle anybody's monies. And we sponsored, as of last week, we have sponsored now fourteen cemeteries. Ivans is one of them, you come to our sponsorship. And what they do, it's, it's a purp, the purpose of it all is to have these young people, particularly young people. When I say young, I'm talking about you as well. Understand.
I've become a kid in a long time.
Hey, let me tell you something. I just watch Freedom in Action. And that's at jeopardy right now, because we don't understand our history. Those guys in those graves gave you your job, that you could have the freedom to be elected by a free people. That's why you're here. And they've been ignored. We put rees under grave the next year, the next year, and we put it on last year. And I thank Benny Sorensen so much for his cooperation in allowing us to do that. But part of it, I've been funding somewhat, I'm not going into detail, but I don't think it's in order for me to spend my kids' inheritance to cover all these cemeteries. I now have eleven cities that have city cemeteries that are carrying the financial burden, as well as giving us the support in publicizing that activity. They placed two and a half million rees last year across the United States. Two hundred and fifty thousand in Arlington Cemetery alone. American heroes are being remembered. Sixty-four thousand people were putting rees on last year in Arlington Cemetery. We had volunteers here in Ivans putting rees on. I got a granddaughter here, she's been a stalwart for me. One of the reasons I came to Ivan the first year, I got a grandson buried up there from the two-twenty-second. Love that kid. He was my first grandson to carry my name. I now have five, but he was number one. He's a giant in my life, he was a patriot. I just come here not to, not to call, beat, beat on anybody, but I think communities need to have a responsibility to tie their nation to the patriotism that they deserve.
Check the mic.
It'll come back on.
Is this that cycle thing?
Yes.
So sorry.
That's all right.
There you go, it's coming.
This young lady over here says, get me on the ball and I'll talk to somebody's councilman. And I appreciate it being done.
We're thrilled you're here.
Look, it's your call. I'm ninety-one, if I make April, I'll be ninety-two. I will be on Rees Across America till the day I die. I went to a little cemetery in Modena, you know where Modena is?
Yes.
There's twenty-eight graves out there. It's not in Washington County, I'm not supposed to even be there. But I had a friend say, hey, there's a guy in there who was a World War II captive, prisoner of war, and he's buried in that cemetery. So they told me there's about eight graves, so I took eighteen rees out, there's twenty-eight veterans out there. You're at a hundred and twenty-seven. Enterprise, one hundred and seventy-eight. Central, thirty-three. Vale, forty-four. Gunlock, twenty-eight. Ivans, one hundred and twenty-seven. Santa Clara, a hundred and seventy-two. Leeds, forty-four. Hurricane, five hundred and thirty, five hundred and thirty-five, something up, five hundred and fifty-three. Laverkan, ninety-nine. Tocqueville, a hundred and thirteen. Virgin, forty. Rockville, thirty-five. Springdale, eighty-eight. Leeds closes it out. They have forty-four. Those men gave everything, and those women, they gave everything so we could enjoy the decisions I see take place here tonight. Democracy in action. I'm proud of the men and women. They need to be remembered. The goal of Rees Across America has one purpose and only one, to honor and remember. Last year, we had rees played in Luxembourg, Germany, Belgium, France, at U.S. Military Cemeteries. It's gonna cover the earth before we're done. I won't see it from this side, but I'll see it. And I'll be so happy that day. I just call on you, if you will. Wake your community up. Support, not just this, support anything that helps build and stabilize our nation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So council, uh, we had the presentation and the re, the request at our last meeting, and you know what the amount is. Dale, I guess we're gonna have to take the light fixtures out of the police station to find a place in the budget. But, um, so discussion on this, open to anyone.
Yeah, Mayor, the, thank you, that was beautiful, and, um, I feel a lot of gratitude for you and for all those that have served. And there's no question in my mind, I don't think any of us, that we ought to, we ought to fund this fully. I think it should be put in the budget, um, under Parks and Rec, you know, with the cemetery somewhere in there, it would maybe make logical sense, I don't know, but, um, my son's helped with it with scouting in the past, I'm familiar with it, and just really, um, it's awesome, so.
Second, no. Yeah, that's, it's close to a motion. Mayor, any other comments?
Mayor, I, I totally agree. I, I think it's just, um, amazing what Anton has done, and his granddaughter Tiffany too, in helping granddaughter, right? And, uh, and then Leila bringing it forward, and I, I, I'm just very impressed. And this is the, we honor our veterans in this city anyway, we, we support them through the, the, the Veterans Home, um, I'm sure in ninety-nine point nine percent of all the invocations at our planning commission meetings and city council meetings, we appreciate our, our active military, our veterans, we honor them, and so how could we not do this?
Yeah, with, as the community that went to great lengths to secure the Southern Utah Veterans Home, um, something we take immense pride in as a community, I want you to know. I've spent many, many hours over there, and with COVID, it's been frankly disappointing that I haven't been able to, to go there very often. But we have grown to love those vets, and we know that they're in the last times, months, maybe years, of their lives over there. And so they kind of come and go.
Yeah, there he is.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
The three of you, yes. You're welcome to kind of come forward in case there are any questions. Oh. Welcome.
This is Anton Coleman.
Meet him.
And Tiffany Martino, his granddaughter.
I know Tiffany. And I know you, yes.
In order for the council to make a proper decision, let me give you a very brief history. About four years ago.
Mike, thank you.
About four years ago, I went to an activity, barbecue daughter of American Revolution we're having. Was out at Harley Davidson at the exit to I-15. And when they got done, they were collecting funds for cemeteries in St. George, Utah. For St. George Cemetery, Tonnequent, and Shewwitz. So when they finished, a lady came over and they said, well, who's covering the rest of the cemeteries? We can't do anymore. We got our hands full now. So I asked them, can we take it over? She says, you can, but not till next year. Because you'll have to have it organized by Monday at midnight, including the money. So I wanted to find out, so I talked to Benny Sorensen, and he says, you guys had at that time, I believe it was 97 veterans. Santa Clara had 129. We were able to get it together, so we gave a presentation to every one of your veterans in Ivans on the 18th of December that year, their rees. We did the same thing at Santa Clara. Well, I get caught up in things. So I got ahold of the Hurricane Valley Support Foundation. It's a 501(c). Because I don't want to handle anybody's monies. And we sponsored, as of last week, we have sponsored now 14 cemeteries. Ivans is one of them. You come to our sponsorship. And what they do, it's a purpose, the purpose of it all is to have these young people, particularly young people. When I say young, I'm talking about you as well. Understand.
I haven't become a kid in a long time.
Let me tell you something. I just watch Freedom in Action. And that's at jeopardy right now. Because we don't understand our history. Those guys in those graves gave you your job. That you could have the freedom to be elected by a free people. That's why you're here. And they've been ignored. We put rees under grave the next year, the next year, and we put it on last year. And I thank Benny Sorensen so much for his cooperation in allowing us to do that. But part of it I've been funding somewhat, I'm not going into detail, but I don't think it's in order for me to spend my kids' inheritance to cover all these cemeteries. I now have 11 cities that have city cemeteries that are carrying the financial burden as well as giving us the support in publicizing that activity. They placed 2.5 million rees last year across the United States. 250,000 in Arlington Cemetery alone. American heroes are being remembered. 64,000 people were putting rees on last year in Arlington Cemetery. We had volunteers here in Ivans putting rees on. I got a granddaughter here. She's been a stalwart for me. One of the reasons I came to Ivans the first year, I got a grandson buried up there from the 2/22nd. Love that kid. He was my first grandson to carry my name. I now have five. But he was number one. He was a giant in my life. He was a patriot. I just come here not to, not to call, beat on anybody. But I think communities need to have a responsibility to tie their nation to the patriotism that they deserve.
Check the mic.
It'll come back on.
It comes back on.
Is this that cycle thing?
It's the timer.
So sorry.
That's all right.
That's better.
There you go. It's coming.
This young lady over here says, get me on the ball and I'll talk to somebody's councilman. And I appreciate it being done.
We're thrilled you're here.
Look, it's your call. I'm 91. If I make April, I'll be 92. I will be on Rees Across America till the day I die. I went to a little cemetery in Modena. You know where Modena is?
Yes.
There's 28 graves out there. It's not in Washington County. I'm not supposed to even be there. But I had a friend say, hey, there's a guy in there who was a World War II captive, prisoner of war, and he's buried in that cemetery. So they told me there's about eight graves, so I took 18 rees out. There's 28 veterans out there. You're at 127. Enterprise, 178. Central, 33. Vale, 44. Gunlock, 28. Ivans, 127. Santa Clara, 172. Leeds, 44. Hurricane, 530, 535, something up, 553. La Verca, 99. Tocqueville, 113. Virgin, 40. Rockville, 35. Springdale, 88. Leeds closes it out. They have 44. Those men gave everything, and those women. They gave everything so we could enjoy the decisions I seen take place here tonight. Democracy in action. I'm proud of the men and women. They need to be remembered. The goal of Rees Across America has one purpose and only one. To honor and remember. Last year, we had rees played in Luxembourg, Germany, Belgium, France, at US Military Cemeteries. It's going to cover the earth before we're done. I won't see it from this side, but I'll see it. And I'll be so happy that day. I just call on you, if you will. Wake your community up. Support, not just this, support anything that helps build and stabilize our nation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So counsel, we had the presentation and the request at our last meeting, and you know what the amount is. Dale, I guess we're going to have to take the light fixtures out of the police station to find a place in the budget. But, so discussion on this. Open to anyone.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. That was beautiful. And I feel a lot of gratitude for you and for all those that have served. And there's no question in my mind, I don't think any of us, that we ought to, we ought to fund this fully. I think it should be put in the budget under Parks and Rec, you know, with the cemetery somewhere in there. It would maybe make logical sense. I don't know, but my son's helped with it with scouting in the past. I'm familiar with it and just really, it's awesome, so.
Second, no.
Yeah, that's, it's close to a motion. Any other comments?
Mayor.
Yes.
I totally agree. I think it's just amazing what Anton has done and his granddaughter Tiffany too, in helping granddaughter, right? And then Leila bringing it forward, and I'm just very impressed. And this is the, we honor our veterans in this city anyway. We support them through the Veterans Home. I'm sure in 99.9% of all the invocations at our planning commission meetings and city council meetings, we appreciate our active military, our veterans, we honor them, and so how could we not do this?
Yeah, as the community that went to great lengths to secure the Southern Utah Veterans Home. Something we take immense pride in as a community, I want you to know. I've spent many, many hours over there, and with COVID, it's been frankly disappointing that I haven't been able to go there very often. But we have grown to love those vets, and we know that they're in the last times, months, maybe years of their lives over there. And so they kind of come and go. But they're all great. And so you caught a community with a soft spot for veterans. I mean, you didn't have to sucker punches, because I think we were already loosened up for this. So counsel, I'll take a motion.
All right, Mayor, I'll give it to you. A move that we fully fund Rees Across America in Ivans to put rees on the graves of our veterans.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we fully fund the Rees Across America program in Ivans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I dare you. No opposition. Vote is unanimous. Get us the information, Tiffany, right? We, sometimes we don't, we've got a ton of things that we're always trying to put out there, so if we have something that we can put in the newsletter, it would be our pleasure to do that. And so the only other thing is, Kate, figure out how to pay for it. Thank you. And we move on. 5(c), council will now discuss and consider a citizen's request regarding seven suggestions to encourage more public involvement and transparency. Patty, what would you chop out of tonight's meeting? I'll start with that.
Nothing so far.
Okay, so. This request came from our friend Patty Dupre. And where did I put my copy of this? Here we go. The stated intent is to encourage more public involvement and transparency, and then the seven suggestions. I'd like to make a little preliminary comment about this, Patty, if it's okay. I think it's important to always keep at the forefront of our thinking that the purpose for these meetings is to conduct the public business. And agendas vary both in complexity and length. So you've made some very good suggestions. A couple of them would kind of be over my dead body. I'll never not allow someone to participate in a public hearing, regardless of how many of them we have and how long they go. But still, your intent is that we have a number of people who are participating via Facebook and Granicus and whatever involved in this. My rebut to that would be we have invited the public to witness and participate in these proceedings. But it's far different than programming your favorite show every first and third Thursday that goes from 5:30 to 7:30 or whatever. It's just far more complex than that. But having said that, I'd like to turn to the council and ask for your thoughts about these suggestions and which of those you think might, oh, before we do that, Dale, I want to go to you because we've got a couple of statutory things here that we also, that we need to bring forward as well.
Well, one of the suggestions was that things be on the agenda and submitted at least 48 hours before the meeting. The statute says you don't have to post the agenda until 24 hours before the meeting. So one way to ensure that we meet your suggestion would be not to post the agenda or any attachments until 24 hours. We try to post it the Friday before to allow people as much opportunity as possible to study the materials in advance. Sometimes the need exists to add an expenditure, something that's critical, that it be adopted and approved quickly instead of waiting two weeks, and so or some item of business comes up that we need to amend. We try to keep that to a minimum. We have asked that staff get staff reports to Kerry so that they can go out with the agenda on Friday before as much as possible. Sometimes they're waiting on a piece of information, and there are some follow-up information pieces. Sometimes, and it's true with longer meetings, it takes longer to do the minutes. And so the minutes may not be ready on Friday. We try to, but they may come Monday or Tuesday, and we get them out just as quickly as we can. So that people have time to read those and have those in advance. But we would be fully compliant if we just posted 24 hours before or got information out 24 hours before. Now, the statute also only requires one meeting be held a month. Well, if we did that, imagine how long that one would be. So to shorten meetings, I hope we don't go to one a week or two a week. Because it's very time-consuming for staff. And so to say, staff, you're going to be here extra days, X number of hours after working hours. And we have families and things. I think, I don't think that's a reasonable request that I, as city manager, would want to place on the employees of the city. But yes, there's some things that we can be focused on and move through quicker than perhaps we do.
Dale, so with the statute stating 24 hours, is it the case that someone could approach the city expecting that an item could go on the agenda, or a council member, or myself, something that was deemed important, expecting that that 24-hour statutory timeframe is honored?
Well, it's, we discourage it. But if it's, if it's critical, then it, we consult you. You see the draft agenda before it goes out on Friday. If we amend, we let you know what the amendment is and why. If we all concur that it's significant and needs to be on that agenda rather than waiting two weeks, then we amend. But that's a decision usually made by the department head, me, and by you. And then Kerry follows through on getting it on an amended agenda and getting it out as quickly as possible.
And that notice is also statutory requirement that that's put out in a timeframe. Okay, conversation, yes.
So I think in one of the agendas for one of the January meetings, there was something put on sort of closer to the meeting. And I think it was highlighted that this was an addition or a change. So I think for, I don't mean to diminish them, but less substantive issues like department reports, because they're just reports, or even a citizen comment, that, you know, that just came in today, I think, right? You know, and you put it on the agenda just today. So, and there's no action being taken on a citizen comment at a meeting. So I don't see a problem with those things coming in late, but things that are more substantive, then can they at least be tagged somehow when the agenda's modified? So that it would require the public to have to look sort of at the last minute at the agenda, but at least they'd see readily that, oh, it's been changed?
I believe Kerry always identifies what the amendment is, or what item on the agenda has been added or changed.
And Mike, it is rare when something that substantial catches us by surprise or comes along and we have to amend the agenda for something on that order, right Kerry? But you could see that. I guarantee you, we're going to be paddling through rough water here for a few months, and there could be some things show up that would, could possibly be quite substantial that would require immediate action. So I agree. I mean, whatever we can do to aid in notification, we should do, but we can't cripple ourselves either, or violate statutory requirements. Okay, there were several of these, and so item five, speak louder, trying to follow that little rule. And Patty, that is actually a requirement. That's a state requirement that all of the conversation is recorded. And so we really can't not do that. So everyone needs to pay close attention to that. By the way, welcome aboard, Adele.
You don't have to worry about speaking loud. I have a very loud voice. I don't need the microphone.
Talk about jumping in the deep end of the pool. Here you are, anyway.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
On number seven, the podium.
We're working on that.
Oh, you want to just work?
Let's talk about it. Tell us what you're doing.
Well, because I think for the moment, all of the hard wiring for the function of that is under the front edge of it. So to move it over there would be a substantial cost, I'll tell you that.
Cut the concrete.
Cut the con, tear out the carpet, cut the concrete, move it over, probably in the order of, I guess, $5,000 minimum, maybe more. What we're doing for now is, and somebody explained to me how the supply chain can't give us a six-inch longer stem.
It's stuck in Canada.
It's been ordered.
I know.
We're waiting for it.
I know. It's just nuts. But for now, at least we're going to make it so that that anyone over 5'2" doesn't have to bend over, right, to speak.
One of the things was that, and lots of people, you know, that are older, including me when I'm sitting out there, if you don't see, you can't see who's talking. You're looking at the backs of them. And so you don't understand what, some people, if they can't see their mouth, they don't hear them. And so that was, you know, brought up by several people to me already, you know, and so I don't know, we might have to figure out if it's worth to the people if we spend some money to fix it.
I mean, it might be. It might be.
I'm sorry, Lance, were you done?
Oh, go ahead.
No, so I wanted to comment on that. I also like, I think, how we had it, which is nice. And then even the screen, you know, you don't want to go on that wall probably, but I guess when this screen's down, those shades go down. Is that right?
Yeah.
So the.
Are they linked? They're not linked?
They are, but we asked them to make it so that we can make them.
Because, you know, they'll come a time of the year where the very features you wanted in this room were hiding.
I know.
We're hiding the Red Mountain and the logo.
Dale, we're fixing that.
But.
It's been added.
So the $5,000 or whatever it costs.
Well, here's what we should do. I'm seeing a lot of support for this. Sorry, I can't, I'm not taking comments yet. What we ought to do, Dale.
There you go, Dennis.
We have a bi-weekly meeting with the, oh, there's the mountain somewhere. We have a bi-weekly meeting with the contractor and the architect. And right now, we're going through the development of the building next door. But they're still working on items in here, right? Punch list items and different things. So Dale, let's, at the next meeting, let's just bring up, because I think everybody kind of would prefer it over there, right? Am I, are we universal in that?
They're giving you all the attention.
I did have a solution, an idea for a solution in the interim. And that is to put a camera right here that shines on the podium that then reflects a little square, like a Zoom meeting almost. Puts that picture up on the board.
Kate?
Mr. Mayor.
And I don't know if that's $5,000 too, but a webcam's what, 40 bucks, 60 bucks?
YouTube already does.
Everything through the chair.
Everything through the chair.
So there, no, you're on.
Oh, okay. So that's it. That was just a solution in the interim. Well, because maybe we're going to have to budget for that, and it's going to be more than we hope or think. So we have to wait a year.
So let's check on both of those. Those are both worthy ideas, yes, council member.
I actually talked to Kate about that at our last meeting, and he has capability to do like a split screen for us so where we can see that. The problem is having a paid employee to run the camera system. So they've said when Kate or Chuck or someone is here full-time during a meeting, they can do that. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
It's, it all, and with the Zoom workaround, everything runs through this one computer in this box here. We do have a remote that when this gets fully functional and it's not just a workaround, someone could sit remotely and control that. They could control the cameras. And so we do have a camera there that we can zoom in on who's speaking at the podium.
It's going to take a producer.
Yes.
And director.
It's a little too much for me to do. Participating in the meeting, showing the document up there. So we have talked about doing a split screen so that we can have the document up, but you can also see who's speaking. Right now, our Zoom workaround, I think when we tried it at our planning commission, the video did not work, but the audio did, but we had no participants. So Zoom right now is being used only when there is a public hearing. YouTube is working. Dale, our mayor.
Yeah.
I was listening, I'm trying to listen on YouTube, and the sound, I could hardly hear. Just, and other people have actually, two weeks before, and I thought maybe it's because these weren't working yet, but maybe this week it's better, but.
They're addressing, they're trying to fix that.
Mayor, yeah, that has been solved. The last planning commission meeting a couple of days ago came in loud and clear.
So Dale, back to you. You may finish your comment.
No, I mean, so it's possible to, I mean, we're looking at, if you want to move the podium back, it would, the wires would be exposed. Otherwise, you've got the slab cut and patching the carpet. Do you mind it that close is the first question? Because it's as far back as it possibly can with the wires inside. Otherwise, the wires come outside, and then we'd have to put something over it so that you don't trip over the wires.
I think we're leading to that moving anyway.
So there's the view of the podium, and Kate, if you did that, can you zoom in? If you're using the remote.
Let's see Chris's badge.
Excuse me, Mayor. Have any of you stood up there when you're talking to people up here? Have any of you tried it? It's really hard because you can't look at everybody at once. And I found myself just looking at a couple of you, and you leave out the people on the edges. So when it was in the corner, you kind of could look at everyone, but it's, and it's really close. It's a little undaunting, I think.
So it sounds like there's a universal interest in having this moved. And so let's start with that, okay, and see what that's going to entail and let everybody know. In the meantime, if there's a simple solution here to allow the faces to be seen, because I agree, that was, that's a good thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question in regards to the podium. I thought that when we had talked about building this place, that that was going to be a portable thing so that we could have activities in the room. So I'm confused why it became a permanent podium to begin with.
It is in that all of the electrical can be unplugged, the box closed up, and that moved. The problem is it weighs like 600 pounds. It's going to take a hand truck to move it, but it is portable. They did not violate that request.
Okay, well, to me, that seems not portable when it can only be sat there, but anyway.
Well, it's a beast. But, but it is. I mean, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's permanently wired. I think it's, I think it's got.
Plug-ins.
It's plugs. Speaking of annoying.
And the bogs.
This building got some fortune. I want that sound to work.
And the podium and the rest.
Seems like I called a special meeting on that at the old city hall, Mayor.
I know you did.
Before this was built.
I know you did. The one disappointment, right?
Can I comment on number four?
Of course.
Yeah. Just for the record, I want it to be known, and it kind of to be fun with Adele being here, because she was on the commission when I was the chair of the planning commission. We hold the record for the shortest meeting in the history of Ivan City. I can't remember if it was seven minutes or nine minutes.
It was under 10.
It was under 10. I just want you to know that, Mayor.
If you don't do anything, it's, you can have a very short meeting.
So, but I will say though, I think maybe, maybe part of that length has been this whole, the COVID Zoom technology thing, maybe we all, I don't know, but I think shorter meetings is a good thing, but we can't control that always, depending on our agenda.
Kind of working our way backwards. So item six, Patty, has to do with things being missing on the website and so forth. We can do a better job of that. Jennifer does a fantastic job with this, and bless her heart, sometimes I don't think she even, she gets the information till it's, you know, too late to fit in.
Mayor, I'd like to, Dennis talked about number four, that meetings being too long. I'd just like to talk about that for a moment because. I'd just like to talk about that for a moment, because this makes me feel really good, really warm inside. Patty wants me at home. Thank you, Patty.
Oh, sweet.
Just don't make a meeting longer.
Mr. Mayor.
Just did.
Yes.
I might recommend that we have fewer jokes. That might make the time.
Second.
Two shit. Oh, I've heard a second even. See, it's it's really hard. We're kind of addressing Patty, right? Patty, you're welcome to come up and stand at the podium because you fit. But sometimes the banter is, you know, lightens the the mood a little bit. But like I say, there are crucial things that sometimes impact the the length of meetings that I personally am not willing to give up. Maybe we can look at agenda lengths and see when we can move something to, you know, a future agenda and that sort of thing. So duly noted on that one. And the others, so number three has to do with having maps. And Mike, you might need to respond to this. So the request is that there are seldom aerial views of of a proposed development, but that we need both the land use and zoning maps here. And we, that used to be the case because we had them on the wall, and that's not, we don't do that anymore. But we we do have them available, I guess, to, we can put them on that one. I'm kidding. Nobody touches that one.
Between the windows there?
They would.
Okay, so maybe we should do that.
There they are, right there. So but to have them available, I think that's probably smart to leave them in here.
Mr. Mayor.
But the the aerial views, we we don't require that of of a developer, right?
I don't know how many screens we have available, you know, when you're, it's kind of hard to show three things at one time, let let alone two, you know. So, yeah, if we change back and forth, maybe it's a little coordination between what we're talking about. But I think that's more of a production than anything else. I I tried Tuesday a lot of times, but the maps were over here and the microphones here, so it's kind of hard to talk. So it's a it's a production thing that we could work on on the zoning side of things, but I don't know if it could ever be perfect.
I know that Chuck can Google Earth any spot in the city. And Chuck, may maybe it's going to be a good idea, because I can see the value of it, actually, and here it is, and something other than draft, you know, lines, to to be able to focus down and, you know, here's here's where this is going in, because Google Earth sort of orient you as it zooms in. But it's a good thought.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interject something?
Please.
At the county, with the county, pardon me.
You can.
At the county, we have a, we have something called pictometry, where they fly every two or three years over the entire, all the cities. And and they do have like the parcel account, the parcels on them. So sometimes that might be helpful. I don't know if Ivans is 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 has pictometry or not. If you do, that's something that can sometimes be popped up there, and it gives you a little more, you can have your parcels on there if you're looking for certain, a certain view. And it's not just, you guys have an account for that? Okay, okay. So that's something that could be pulled up too.
It's on your website. You can go to washco.utah.
Yeah, you can go, yeah, you can go on the county website.
So council, that that addresses the seven of these. And the question is, are we taking these under advisement, or is there something in here that that requires an action, something more formal? It's really administrative mostly.
Right.
Right? And then me shutting up when it's appropriate to do that, okay, which is now.
All right.
All right, moving forward.
Thank you.
Council will now discuss and consider approval of a development agreement for utilit- utility, Unity Village subdivision. Mike, is that you?
Probably me. This this is pretty much our standard form of development agreement. You can see in the bold, we've added, and this is why we are requiring development agreements with every subdivision, is to add the language that's bolded that of the potential shortage of water and for them to understand that building permits will be issued only upon water availability. We intend, as has been discussed with the Water Conservancy District and the cities in the county, to add that sort of requirement to our land use applications and that language appear on our on our on our land use applications as well, so that every stage of the way, they are warned that there may not be enough water when it comes time to pulling a building permit. And the building permit won't be issued without water availability. So there's nothing particularly unique. This is a one-phase subdivision that we typically would not have required a development agreement in the past, but we do now so that we can talk about water.
Mayor, council member. So if we think about this, do we need to further define availability? Like, we all kind of understand it here today in 2022, but, you know, we're all going to be gone someday, right? We're not, and then what, what did they mean back? You know what I mean saying? And I don't want it to be arbitrary or somebody's opinion about whether it should be really understood and well defined.
Thank you for thank you for bringing that up. In the near future, we will know precisely how much water we will have available to Ivan City in terms of ERCs or ERUs or whatever, meaning we'll be able to to know very clearly what we can approve and what we cannot. It's going to be a bitter pill to swallow because it will, it just cannot be business as usual anymore. Now, the the good news is that the Conservancy District has got a a regional reuse plan that involves reservoirs, two of them here, the big one in Warner Valley, and a plumbing system similar to what we have with the culinary water that that crosses the entire county, clear from Leverkin and Tocqueville to Ivans. And but it's a long-term thing and a lot of money, estimates over $300 million to get just the plumbing in. So what what I believe is going to happen, you guys, is that right now, there there is a certain amount of water. Now, there's there's a standard that the state imposes that attaches a a percentage of an acre foot per year to each approved building permit, right? The permit's paid. That standard has been .89 acre feet for many years. The district has appealed to the state and has demonstrated that that has dropped countywide to .78. So you mathematicians realize that if we're allocating less water per building permit, there are more building permits available, given the the volume of water that that we have available to us, right? So when we get to the ordinance, I'll talk further about this, but the goal now is to hit .59 in the district's language. In the participating cities, the language is .55 acre feet. Now Chuck tells us that we're currently at .62. We lead the county in water conservation, but we've still got a ways that we can go. And I'm, I can't, I can't get into it any deeper for the moment, right? There's conversations going on, and I serve on on the district board, so these aren't, they're not final decisions and board actions on on things. I'm just telling you that, to answer your question in a very long way, that 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 is going to be very clear in the not-too-distant future.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And in the near future, there will also be.
Thank you.
Clarified that the developer would have to pay impact fees and would get something like a will serve letter. In order to pull the building permit. And so that will define that word availability, but it's, that process is not available yet, but it's been talked about. And I think it's going to come in the near future. But there's ideas being kicked around. This language is language that the city had previously used when it had water problems, and so we've just resurrected it. And we want to, we want to at least start putting things on development agreements, and then we'll refine it in our ordinances and our development agreements across the board as we get the more precise language.
So some of the hard things that we're going to have to face here in the near future are penalties for waste. There there are water users who simply don't care how how big their water bill is or how much water they're they're wasting. And the the Reader's Digest story is this. Washington County has been accused of doing a poor job with conservation and with reuse. And it's it's become very clear that the Lake Powell Pipeline, if it ever happens, will only happen on the condition that we develop fully our reuse capacity and and achieve a significant conservation level, right? That those are the two fundamentals of what the district is now focused on, because at 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 some point, we reach the plateau where there's no more capacity, period. And without the pipeline, we will stop growing far, far shy of what the anticipated build out is in the county. So Ivan City is going to be called upon to be an aggressive participant in this. And it was it was made mention of existing homes, right? Everything we're focusing on now is new construction and so on. But I think the days got to come where the the cost of overuse and so forth just can't be accepted without there being a penalty of some kind or a means of curing it. And the district's approach is that they've appealed for both federal and state funding to launch a really aggressive buyback on turf. And there are other conservation programs to see that they're fully funded, so that people who want to make changes but but don't feel it's right for them to have to pay the full price to do that will be able to do that. But all these things are going to be imperatives, and that's why I say there, we're we're not looking, this is not going to be a comfortable seat for a number of meetings in the future, in my opinion. It's going to be very difficult to to do this. But failing to do it seals our fate. And I'm one that, you know, if growth stopped, fine, there are a lot of people that say that's great. The problem is our debt structure on our bonds and and everything are have a significant growth component.
Mayor.
Yes.
I I have the same question that that Dennis has about the the term availability. It sounds, though, like it's hard to define now because it's still in the works with the, between the Conservancy District and the cities. So is availability, Dale, the the way you look at this, is it up to the city to be the decider of whether there's availability or not? Or is it just going to be a big argument between the city and the developer potentially?
I I think I think very soon, from the discussions that I've heard, we'll see something equivalent to, if not exactly, a will serve letter that that they will bring to get their building permit. So they're going to have to show proof that they've paid the impact fee.
Or bring their own water.
Or bring their own water.
But it's too early now to put that language in here because it doesn't exist yet, and it may not be quite the same.
Correct.
And so is this comfortable enough that we'll tell the property owner or developer whether there's availability or not?
Well, it's it's what we've used in the past. It's we, we're just starting to bring it out and put them on notice that water is an issue. If if you have a term that you prefer to use.
This is a liability statement right now. I mean, essentially is what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, we're just kind of doing a disclaimer.
Yes.
But more to come is what you're saying, Mayor.
So you put availability per water supplier. And whoever supplies the water, it's available. If you go get your own, whatever, you know.
Yeah, the two options are going to be, you'll either secure a a letter, a a letter of service from the from the district, or you'll have water that you're that you're bringing. And there there may be somebody that can find that, although it's getting very scarce, as you know. Cana is a little different animal. They've got their own water system out there, so.
Parts of Cana.
You'll you'll probably carry on, it's similar to to what you have been. But I I just want you to know that my efforts with the district and and my fellow mayors has been successful. There is a, there has been a huge effort to determine the the number of existing platted lots across the county. And and there will be a comparison of that to the current availability of water. And by the way, we need to understand that is not a static thing. Because as a reservoir comes online, as as the the standard for, the supply standard for each ERU is reduced, then the availability of of new development increases. And eventually, with the regional secondary line in place, I mean, the the district has got a great plan, but they kind of got caught with, oh, oh, pipeline's not happening. Now what do we do? And now we know what we're doing. So don't be pessimistic about it, but it's going to require, particularly, I think, in the short term, some really, really aggressive measures and some very careful management of of development. And Dale has mentioned many times that this council could very well face, and maybe even in the near future, when we get the the feedback and the information, the the time to slow down development is at is at the rezoning. We may have to, we may have to look at, we can't accept any rezones or 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 new subdivision applications or whatever. Now, Chris, don't go blow this out of proportion, because I don't need to have a nuclear explosion in the county here. I'm just saying, we're working it out.
Mayor.
I love Chris. I'm glad Chris is our our guy.
Mayor.
Yes.
One thing, when when we all say platted lots, we need to also include the parcels, correct? Because every parcel that even if it's not platted has a right to build on, just without subdividing. So it's something, I'm, I was just thinking of this the other day when we're counting, we need to count platted lots plus parcels, because they're they're, you can go get a permit for your house on a parcel.
That's interesting. I don't think that was a part of the calculation, but that probably is something worthwhile. Yes.
Yes, Dale.
And Mr. Mayor, perhaps maybe we say will be issued only upon proof of water ability to the satisfaction of the building official.
I'll tell you, and Dale is is right on top of this. St. George City is requiring that a developer sign an affidavit. So it's not just, hey, on the plat, might not have water. They're requiring the the developer and property owners to sign an affidavit stating that they understand that they may get this development built, and there will not be water available for it. And I think, Mike, you're going to see us working through some changes in definition as to when when these entitlements occur, that this is going to have to go to final plat, that the entitlements are are nothing more than procedural until final plat. Dale has got to work the kinks out of this. It's complicated, isn't it?
Yeah, we've we've got a copy of what St. George has, and it's, it is draft language, and they acknowledge that. They're going to add to it and change it, and and I've got some additions that I would like to see added to it. So the cities are are working cooperatively together, right? And we have regular monthly city meetings as city managers, and and we talk about this this sort of stuff. But what we're trying to do right now is just, yeah, give give a disclaimer that this is, you know, this is back as an issue, and we're going to refine it in the near future.
Take good enough, everybody.
But back to the business, though, this is a development agreement that you're looking for approval. So are there any other discussion other than this?
And to your, to the point of your question, I don't think we can go any farther.
Right.
Right now.
But I mean, in the rest of the development agreement, though.
Any other concerns in that agreement?
Dale, they've agreed for the colors and all that in this agreement, looks like.
Earth tones.
On both of these development agreements, I heard back from them on one of them. The other one, they were satisfied with and agreed to. They're almost identical development agreements with this, at least one of the parties as developer in both developments. And so we're just approving that. And then if it comes back, that the one that they didn't respond back on, they may have felt like their response was adequate on the first subdivision. If there's an issue, then we'll bring it back. But we're just trying to move this along in the process.
And in this agreement, does it say per the city ordinance? I didn't notice that on the.
Yeah.
It does say that they're, to meet the design guidelines of the city.
Okay, I did read that later on.
And we did talk about that with them.
Okay.
These two are almost identical, aren't they?
They are.
Mayor, I move that we approve the development agreement for Unity Village subdivision.
Second?
Second.
Moved a second that we approve the development agreement for Unity Village subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, similar. Any further discussion? Motion.
Mr. Mayor?
No, hold on, if there is a question.
Well, Mayor, yeah, so just as, just a timing issue here. So on this one, we're looking at Serenity Estates approving a development agreement, but we haven't even yet approved a preliminary plan. That's the next agenda item. Shouldn't it be flipped around?
Dale, explain that, would you?
Until we get all these disclaimers in place and on the applications and get it refined with the, with the district, we're trying to move it up in our process that it is approved at the time the preliminary plan is reviewed. So that it's in place at the time we're talking about their infrastructure and all of that. They, we have a development agreement, and they're agreeing to these terms. And then the final plat is really kinda perfunctory to make sure that, one, they've met all the terms of the studies that they provided for infrastructure, and, two, it meets the requirements of the preliminary plan.
That makes sense?
You sold me. Mayor, I move that we approve a development agreement for Serenity Estates.
Thank you. Second?
We need to hear Adele.
Crickets?
Let's have Adele.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved a second that we approve a development agreement for Serenity Estates subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving to item 5F, council will now discuss and consider approval of a preliminary plan for Serenity Estates subdivision located approximately 600 South Main, Rasmussen Properties LLC, owner Frank Allen, applicant. Thank you.
So Serenity, sorry, Serenity Estates is nineteen lots. They are currently in the R110 zone, which is single-family residential minimum 10,000 square feet. TRC looked at the preliminary plan on January 4th, 2022, and the planning commission recommended approval on January 18th of 2022.
This parcel is located on approximately 600 South Main. It's next to the parcel owned by the Catholic Church, I believe.
Does this, doesn't border Unity Park?
No, that's Unity Village.
That's over one. Unity's four.
Two over, two over.
Gotcha.
Shadow came.
Yeah.
Mayor, I mean, it looks like a pretty standard development. The density of it is the same or even lower than the surrounding properties. The only vacant parcel being the church property directly to the south. But the, so I don't have a problem with it.
Other comments?
As it says in the staff report, it is compliant with city ordinances, so I support it as well.
Okay, thank you. Let's translate that into a motion.
I move that we approve the preliminary plan for Serenity Estates subdivision located approximately 600 South Main, Rasmussen Properties LLC, owner Frank Allen, applicant.
Second?
Moved a seconded. Moved a second that we approve a preliminary plan for Serenity Estates subdivision located approximately 600 South Main, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll now go to item 5G. Council will discuss, have a discussion regarding adopting and implementing regulations for landscaping and water conservation for developing land in Ivan City.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we continue the discussion on this 5G, unless you wanna give some introductory things, and then.
I, that was where I was actually hoping we would go, if you don't mind me explaining the rationale behind that. So we've got a lot of, we've got a lot, we're juggling a lot of balls in the air right now, right? And there is information that I think is gonna be very important for us to consider as we actually adopt our version of the ordinance. But I want to share a couple of things with you. We had a chance to get together, at least some of the mayors and some of the city managers and so forth, to talk about this ordinance and what variations there may be that are going to exist in it. And it became pretty clear, didn't it, Dale, that different cities have got slightly different needs and may want to allocate their available water in slightly different ways. For example, we have two significant resort developments coming into our city that are our financial future. And their needs are slightly different than is defined in this generic, you know, commercial, not this, not that. Also, there's a continuing discussion about the area of turf that should be allowed, whether that should really go up, kind of as the lot size goes up, or is there a ceiling at which there just doesn't need to be any more grass for the kids to throw a frisbee or whatever it may be? They're gonna have to digest that one. And the main one is that I want everybody to be thinking in terms of, because it's a slightly different take on all of this, is that the objective is that each city, each participating city achieves .55 in the standard supply, the supply standard, right? So that we get down to this .55 acre feet. And then how the city achieves that can be somewhat individual. And it's a little different than, oh, man. It's a little different than the district has been proposing. But I think the district is on board with the fact that they are going to get variations on this. You know, no city, we, our city council can't tell Hurricane City Council what they gotta do. But when we understand how much water that we, Ivan City, might have available for development in the near future, then we can decide how, you know, what are we gonna do? How far are we gonna go with conservation, whatever, to stretch that out or not? I think it's, I think it's the way that we need to be thinking about our ordinance is, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get there and allow the things that need to happen in Ivans to happen? One interesting thing that I never knew, and it sounds completely improbable, is that a swimming pool loses as much water per square foot as a square foot of turf. So one of the thoughts out there is that a pool is included in your allowable grass area. So you wanna have a pool, there's.
Is that with a cover or without? With cover, without?
With cover. Think without cover. Well, not as the discussion went, it's more if you don't have a cover. It's more than grass. But if you have a covered pool, you're still gonna lose anyway.
No, it's.
I am not the scientist, and that, I would look to the guy in the back there before I listen to you. And he's gonna be around. So, but the idea is that there are some refinements to this. One thing, and you know me and my hot water recirculation lines, the district threw in this up to .06 or .6 gallons to get water to a faucet. That's absurd. I hope our city does not adopt that number. That needs to be at least .3 or less. .6, that's more than half a gallon of water running out to get a drop of hot water to a faucet. Not acceptable to me. Anyway, and that leads us to this. I mean, everything else I've got is detailed, so if you'd like to make that, is everyone concurrent? That we ought to continue this and get maybe a little more of this refined information before we start acting on this?
Okay, Mayor, so can I?
Oh, please.
I'll move that we continue this discussion to a future meeting.
Great.
Second?
Moved a second that we continue this agenda item, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item 5H. This is a presentation from Cade regarding our five-year budget plan and priorities for year-ending 2023.
The one part that wasn't spoken about with this podium is it's just too close to, right, Adele? It just feels like you're in the heart of everything, not to keep on throwing it, but.
And then you gotta look over these giant screens.
Are you back?
I'll just hold it. It'll be awkward, but better than trying to lean over. Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, Dale, the department heads, and I met to discuss what the next five years look like. And a wise guy once told me, well, a wise guy once told me that he used to guarantee to his clients or his customers or whoever that his forecast will be 100% wrong. So I'm sitting here forecasting, and I've spent a lot of hours, and the department heads have looked at it, but I 100% guarantee you this won't be 100% correct. So with that, we did our best to discuss, you know, what the city is facing with water, with Highway 91 and all those other capital projects out there. We looked at staffing levels, we looked at forecasts for expenditures, revenue. One of the charts, Dale. And I've looked at the past five-year plans, and it always kinda seems to paint the same picture. The change in net position before transfers, so essentially how much money we're putting in the piggy bank at the end of each year is slowly declining. Over the past five years, that's always been the picture, is expenditures are starting to catch up with revenues. So at some point, how do we meet that? Do we raise property taxes? Do we hope that Black Desert and Centier help with other sales tax avenues? Is there another revenue that we could bring in? And that, again, especially now with inflation more prevalent than it was in years past, with the forecast that was put together, it continues to be the same, that expenditures, I was just talking with Benny before this, that he's seen all of his operational expenditures in the past month double, going from $700 to $1,400. So things continue to go that way. And again, who knows what this year will bring us? Things could change dramatically. 2021, we had a fiscal year 21, we had a great year in terms of savings. Majority of that transfer or that money was transferred to the Capital Projects Fund to fund this building, the Police for Model. And then this year, with inflation and the budget amendment we did with the COLA adjustment, that's a big reason, and as well with the street sweeper being on the budget to be purchased, that was another large capital expenditure coming out of the capital, out of the general fund, my apologies. On the staffing, you know, something that the city in all its years has done really well has been efficient with the employees that are currently in place, whether it be softwares or new processes to make it so it works more efficient. You know, for example, Dale, for the last nine years, has been the city manager and attorney. And over the course of those nine years, he's roughly saved the city about $2 million, wearing both hats. So, you know, as we project it, as the city continues to grow, sorry, this is hard trying to balance it and talk and everything, but, you know, we're not projecting a ton of growth within the city in terms of employment because we continue to believe that with softwares coming out that Chuck presented on last city council, that there is the ability to maintain our staffing level, still provide the level of service needed.
Wow.
Not guaranteeing it, but that's the, you know, that's kind of the innovative ways that we're looking at things of, rather than inflate our staffing, how can we be more efficient with resources we have? So that's the five-year plan. Now, this is a, it's a living document. So by all means, if you guys see things, especially in the capital project part, in terms of how you want priorities to go about, let me and the other department heads, Dale, know of the vision you think we should take in terms of budgeting for certain amounts, certain projects, and what should be priority.
What's up on the screen now is what I was studying when I just ran out of time to study anymore. I wanna, I wanna digest that a little more, but there are a couple of things that kinda glare. Sorry. So, for example, at law enforcement, we got vehicles in 2024, and that goes up increasingly. Is that based on a number of new vehicles that we're going to have to acquire or?
I was forecasting based on inflation.
Oh, based on inflation.
I mean.
Two vehicles every year.
Correct, yes, every two years.
So that's not adding numbers, right?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor, we may still be able to, you know, Bob's concerned about getting behind in the rotation of his vehicles, that if we skip a year, then that means he's gonna be asking for four the next year to get back on his schedule. But the ARPA funds, the final ruling came out and said that the ARPA funds can be used to purchase police vehicles. So next year, we may still propose to the council that we fund.
Is that why there's a zero there?
Well, there was zero because we told him, "You don't get vehicles next year." And now we're saying with ARPA funds, that might be a legitimate use that we ought to consider. So this is, this document is still in flex a little bit. It's as we have the funds available.
Also, real quick, thanks to Councilmember Scott. If you look at irrigation, there was just some miscommunication between Chuck and I. So with the irrigation project, we.
Where is that?
Dale, scroll down just a tad, right there. So, like I said, there's some miscommunication. And Chuck, by all means, if you wanna come up and steal the mic from me, you can. But right there is good, Dale.
Didn't get that far.
So this irrigation project in total will have three phases. The first phase, which is missing, Chuck projects, again, with inflation, who knows? But 6.5 million. Phase two, which is up there but a little bit off, Chuck projects to be 1.7 million. And then the final phase, phase three, 4 million. So a total of around $13 million for this irrigation project to span over the next five to seven years. Just as a clarif, you know, a clarification of something that was left off the report that was sent at the time.
And is that pretty much all on us?
Mayor, so I think phase three, though, would go be just beyond this five-year budget, right? Phase one is supposed to be this year to 2024, phase two, '25, '28, so.
Meaning there should be more money in these columns, Mike, or what are you saying?
Yeah, well, we're missing phase one, which should be happening now. Phase two doesn't have to happen this quickly. Well, I shouldn't be talking about this, this is for Chuck, but I thought phase one is $6.5 million, that's, that would be happening before phase two.
That's a big deal. I'd like to see that corrected version.
I was updating it earlier when I was back there playing with all the screens. So I'll get this to you, I'll send it out tonight after the meeting, and we can publish on the website as well. So that'll have all the three phases, but roughly over the next seven years, it'll be 13 million. And we have a healthy amount of impact fees, but not nearly enough. We don't have $13 million to, even over the next seven years, we wouldn't amass $13 million. So we did just pay off a bond, that opens up a bonding revenue. We have the water and sewer revenue sources that, maybe I'm forgetting some legal thing that Dale could chime in on, but we could use those as an avenue as well for bonding if we needed to for this irrigation project. And then again, as you were talking about growth earlier, you know, if we stop growth and the impact fees dry up, and we still have this project, we can't use street, or not street, but impact fees to help pay for those.
So we don't need, we don't need to replace culinary with secondary as quickly. So we don't need, we don't need to replace culinary with secondary as quickly either, right?
Yeah, like, I'm gonna tell you, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm trying to get better at that, okay?
Commissioner Anderson.
You gotta stay close to your mic, though. No. The, what I, you know, obviously, in this world we're living today is, I found pipe prices have doubled, labor has gone up 35%, fuel is killing us, you know, and so I always say, don't even know, if someone comes to me and asks me if they, I can build something, I says, I don't know, depends on if we get materials, you know, so it's, I mean, this is very positive thinking, I guess is what I'm saying. So, so I would be, be, when it comes time to do it, I, I think we really need to look and see what's going on, because it's not a, it's a rough world out there right now.
The other thing that Councilmember Scott brought up in an email earlier this week was the fire station remodel. So Dale, if you go up a little bit, and this was just a number we put out there. I know we talked about remodeling the current station, and we had that planned in discussions in 2025, right? Councilmember Scott brought up a point, if you want to bring that up again, it's more than great, but he was concerned about the level of service for Cantor and the rest of Ivans, where it currently is all in Santa Clara. And if that needed to be brought up or to an earlier date rather than 2025.
Is that remodel where?
Uh, it would be, yep, Center Street. Or if we decide, if you decide that we want a new one, again, it would be significantly more than half a million dollars that we have currently down for remodel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dale?
I guess my confusion, I thought the 500,000 was not for the fire station remodel, but for a ladder truck. That's about the same timeframe and the same cost as a, as a ladder truck would be. And I think it's gonna take priority over the remodel of this building, because we still don't know what the use of this building is gonna be in the scheme of fire plans.
What's interesting is this building functioned as a fire station manned. I, I don't know. Guess I don't know.
Jenny, answer them.
Yes, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I don't, if it is the fire station, I don't know why we would need to remodel, given that nobody's there. So, yeah, I, I think that would be for the fire truck, for the ladder truck.
Which we can also use ARPA funding for, but that's, then we're getting close to exhausting, that would exhaust one payment that we've received of half a million dollars. That would be our share of a ladder truck. And then a couple of police cars and it's, it's almost gone. We'd have, we'd have about 300,000 left to do something with.
Let's spend it before it's worth 100,000.
What is ARPA funds? What does that mean?
It's the American Recovery Act, something.
They're, they're federal funds to help with dealing with COVID, the COVID crisis, so we could use it on infrastructure, we could use it to revenue loss.
So we had initially thought of using it, applying it towards the water tank, the secondary water tank. But that appears to be in the future for a little bit. I mean, we would need a reservoir out here to, you know, move the water over. And, and we have these other needs that are more immediate. And before those costs go up, maybe it's, maybe it's better to get, to spend it on that and then bond for, use that revenue stream to bond for the water tank and those initial backbones of infrastructure, the piping necessary for the secondary water system.
And I got a little update, but I haven't had a chance to tell Dale or Cade about, I've warned you a little bit about it, but the Highway 91 project, we originally had committed $900,000 towards it. You know, with inflation, now it's looking like we need to commit a lot more. And we do have about $400,000 worth of conduit that we're putting in, because it's along a corridor where we have it in our master plan to try to get conduit in, in the ground. And so the ARPA funds could be used for that $400,000 of conduit, it would help us out immensely. I'll be coming to actually the council with a new agreement from the federal government to, for the city to commit probably about two and a half million dollars, honestly, if we're gonna be able to do Highway 91.
Really? Double?
Well, more than double, because it was, we were, well, the project hasn't more than doubled. Our contribution is more than doubled, because the project's gone up by a million and a half in our, our country. We, we pick up the slack, that's where, that's the position we're in, is to pick up the slack of that. So, we've got some problems of figuring out how to fund that, and hate to see all that money go to the public safety department.
Well, fire, we don't have impact fees that we can really use too much, since it's under the control of Santa Clara, whereas, you know, we, we, we can use, we won't have impact fees to use for police vehicles either, because it's all being spent next door this year. But we're in a, we're in a tough funding situation for a lot of things. It's a, this, next year's gonna be a tight year. So, yeah, it's gonna, but, and costs are, costs are, they're rising at a rapid rate.
Keep us in line.
Yeah, any questions? I did a lot of talking.
I'm gonna have some, like I say, I couldn't get to the end of this and I was going through it in detail, so I'll just come, I'll just come in and talk to you. So if you, if you'll make the corrections that we've talked about, so I'm looking at something that's clean, right, then I'll come visit with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right, consent agenda, simply the meeting minutes for January 20th. Any corrections or additions? Motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second? Aye. Seconded that we... It's a little early for aye, it's, are you second? Oh, sorry about that. Okay, I think I'll take that, I'll take that as a second. Move to second, we approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'll, I'll just abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting.
I will too then, because I wasn't here either.
Oh, yeah. We got votes? Yeah, I guess we do. Now we do. All right, council reports, beginning with Councilmember Anderson. How was COVID?
It's good when it's gone.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Adele?
Uh, no.
Anything to report on the last hour and a half?
Last, no, 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 I think I'm okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayor?
Did you do Johnson?
Did I skip you?
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm here.
I'm, I'm a shattered man.
I think you were saving the best for last, so it's okay, you can move over. No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayor?
Three things. Welcome, Adele. Congratulations. Number two, I hope that our city has some involvement in the decision made about volunteerism for the fire department. I do have some concerns based on some of the things that are being talked about in, in my circles.
Thank you.
So if that, that ought to be transparent and, and I didn't mean to put her on the spot, but I think she kind of was surprised that maybe I'd heard that. It was the impression I had, so I just...
Because I hadn't heard that, so...
Okay. And then third, I just want to publicly tell Chuck that I think he's awesome. And I think there may have been times where when my questions, as you know, I, I'm not doing it for, you know, I just have honest questions about some of the things that we're spending, and I just appreciate the due diligence and the efforts that really all of you make in the city, the department heads. We fully respect each of you, Chuck included, and I, I think sometimes we tease him and hey, let's cut his contingency by a thousand or, and you don't have to put all this in the minutes necessarily, but I'm just saying.
No, do.
It's, I just do really appreciate, we, as a council, I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone, but I think I am in that we are so fortunate to have the, the management administration that we have from, you know, Dale and Kerry and, you know, Chuck, Cade, Mike.
We are blessed, I just can't tell you.
Benny, everybody, so, thank you.
It's amazing for our little city to go meet with other much larger cities and the depth of understanding that, that we walk in with. Pretty cool.
That's it, thank you.
A source of great pride to your mayor, I want you to know. My report is simple. Hey.
Oh.
Jenny, what does he have against us? Pride to shorten the meeting.
He knew your joke.
I think Dennis needs a hug fest over here with staff, right? That's it, that's my report.
Thank you. I probably caught you guys off guard with my newsletter article, if you've read it. I've gotten lots of inquiries about Utopia, and we've talked about that here, Adele, if you don't know what that is. Utopia Fiber began as a, as an inter-local creation among half a dozen northern Utah cities to create a fiber optic network through their cities and then invite ISPs to, to utilize that. And the, the idea was to get high-speed service to all of their residents. That has, it went through a very rough period, nearly failed. But now, but out of Utopia came Utopia Fiber, which is now working its way across the state and has been very successful in most communities, generally reducing the cost of service, because you, if you don't know it, TDS or CenturyLink or any other service provider that has cable in the ground is charging you for the service line and the, the service, right? The idea with Utopia is that, that the city doesn't directly own the fiber network, Utopia does, but it's in agreement with the city. But any, any ISP, internet service provider that wants to can utilize this highway. And so in, in other cities, and you're, you're gonna want to Google this and look it up, don't, don't just trust me, but in other cities where Utopia has been brought into the city, they literally bond for all of the infrastructure, so it doesn't add to the debt of the city. But the city has to commit, in our case, it's probably gonna be 40%, that we'll have 40% of our residential hookups convert to that. They've never fallen short with that, I think once for a very brief period of time. And so you're gonna see on the, if you heard me make reference to the, to the website, there is a survey on there where we're polling our residents to find out, after they read the newsletter article, are you in favor of this or not? Because we, as a council, you as a council, cannot make an educated decision about this without knowing the sentiment of the city. And so Mike, for you being new, Lance, you too, we've, we've only had kind of casual conversations about this in the past with previous council, but with Santa Clara pulling the trigger now, they're, they're moving forward with it, and St. George, I don't think is far behind. But, but Ivans has been included in the discussions for at least a couple of years or more, right? As potentially being one of the partners. So that is gonna come to the council for, to discuss and, you know, whether approve or not, and hopefully we'll get enough response from our residents to have a reasonable sample of what the interest is. The, the difference is that with Utopia, it's, it's fiber optic to every, not to the node, but to every residence. Guaranteed one gig up and one gig down. So the, the service is guaranteed fast. You hear on the commercials, we guarantee up to, which usually means ain't gonna get there, right? And sometimes it falls way short. So it would, there's no question it would be an improved level of service, at least at this moment in time, to our residents. And I don't know how you all feel about it, but, but internet services ranks right up there now with power, water, streets and all the rest. It's a crucial part of your infrastructure. So, that's my report. Take the survey, read the article. Dale?
Just one thing, letting you and those who are still listening, know that tomorrow morning, they will be testing the emergency siren on top of the firehouse again.
What time? I want to be here.
Nine.
Around nine.
Nine-ish?
Yeah. That's all I have, Mayor.
I was sure. Anybody else? Let's see, where are we? Items to be placed on future agendas, do we have anything that we added today?
Well, the pickleball, I think, let's, at least in our budget discussions, I'd like to, I think that's a great, we should respond to that. I think it's a great thing for our community.
Dale, we'll just bring Benny in and chat about that then, huh?
Okay.
All right, no cause to adjourn to a closed meeting, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Anybody opposed to that? Didn't think so. Thank you, everyone.